Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Beck, can we do a roll call, please?
Counselor Barnes?
Good evening.
Good evening. Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Mayor Mongett?
Here.
Counselor Madrano?
Here.
Counselor Sampson?
Good evening.
Good evening. Counselor Walton?
Hello.
Hello. And Mayor Pro Temow?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. We'll begin tonight with public input. If you, we should speak for public input, you have five minutes. When I call your name, just come up to the podium and speak on any issue. Please fill out one of these yellow speaking forms before you do, and you may grab one through the glass doors in the back, and hand it to Clerk Beck, and you'll get your time. Tonight, we do have two public hearings, one on short-term rentals and one on accessory dwelling units. If you are here for either of those items, we request that you wait for the public hearing to speak about this specifically. However, if you absolutely need to speak during this portion, you may as well. So we'll just go in order. We'll begin with Ron Spalding.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Ron Spalding, 1326 El Dorado Way. I'll try to be quick. Three things I'd like to comment on. On the consent agenda item, the contract Design Scape Colorado, the Zerescape conversion project, I want to say that I support the contract and understand the funds are in 2023 budget and the projects that will be affected, City Hall, Police Station, Library. And quoting from, you know, the handout, it's going to save a lot of water, a million gallons, set a good example for the residents and HOAs, and that's a good thing. And, you know, as everyone knows, we've got water issues in the whole West. And just for your information, I live in Coal Creek Village, and the master HOA is working with city staff and Northern Water. We're going to have one of the premier Zerescape projects if you drive by South Boulder Road. We got a $20,000 grant from Northern Water, which is a maximum grant, which has to be matched, and we've matched that, $40,000. So if you drive by and look right across from the Avalon Apartments, you'll see the signs given us by Northern Water. We appreciate the staff on helping us through that, and we're underway, and we'll see what happens. So we're right with you on that. Second item I'd like to address in the consent agenda item is assessing architecture Bob Burger Rec Center pool renovation. Again, this is one that I support, the contract for Phase One, which is the concept and schematic design for the aquatic facility. Also understands the funds are in the construction, in the Conservation Trust Fund, and all this is coming from the packet for those who are here haven't read it. We've had significant water loss, you know, over the years. I swim in there regularly. It's a cool pool. The city's made several improvements since I've been here. I've been here 12 years. Came here in 2011. I think the city's done a good job in trying to keep the facility modernized and updated. And however, the original contract or construction was 31 years ago. I personally concur, it's time to take a fresh look at the facility. Just some statistics, when I got here in 2011? Yeah, 2011. Lafayette was about 18,000 approximate residents in 2011. Right now, in current, it's approximately 30,000, a little bit more, 66% increase, and the Bob Burger Rec Center certainly felt that. And it's a tremendous facility. I didn't know anything about the contractor, so I looked in their project portfolio, and for the citizens who might be looking at this, man, I was amazed. They're the company that did the Bob Burger Rec Center master plan construction and updated when I came here. That was a three and a half million dollar contract. You know, improved the whirlpool, steam room, rec room, everything. And the place is packed. I use every one of those facilities, and the only thing left to do is the pool. Masters swimmers would love that. So, man. Then, the great door outdoor Woodward Park walked out my back door with the grandkids. I'm right there. They had that contract. And I remember being here for the bond issue, 5.7 million. What a facility that is, we all know. Then, I'm not a golfer, but once in a while I'll go have lunch. Indian Peaks Golf Clubhouse, they worked on that. $1.1 million contract, 2017. So for those, if anybody has concern about this firm, they're really good. And of course, that's just for the plan and design. It's going to go through public meeting. I hope you pass it. We'll have to see what the cost is for the pool. And last but not least, on the regular business, the Kensington TiVo annexation, I don't have much to say about that. Staff recommends that it be approved, and you all decide that. But whatever happens, I'm a little premature. I'm personally concerned what the proposed development would be or might be. We wouldn't know about that if you pass it until the Planning Commission has its meeting on the 23rd, then we've got a whole nine yards to go on that. So right now, I'm neutral on that. If you pass it, great. Planning Commission, take a look. Come before City Council. And one of the things, and we've all discussed before, that I'm concerned about is, and who knows what we're going to do as a city, but if we don't add an exit, Erie couldn't add an exit. And I don't know, you know, we have a better relationship with them all now, so we'll just have to see that plays out. That's my concerns on that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have Frank Archuleta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bear with me, counsel. A criminal conspiracy by the city of Lafayette. Hate, racism, discrimination, and now segregation at the Lafayette Cemetery. Counsel, we must not be afraid to acknowledge the history of the Lafayette Cemetery. We must not run or cover up the history at the Lafayette Cemetery. We ask you to support Monty Stevenson. We also have the support from the skate director, Sunny Suba, with the League of United Latinos of American Citizens. And you can look that up. The Lafayette Human Rights Commission supports us, the Lafayette History Museum, the Catholic Church, Melissa Heisler, the library director, Rachel Hansen from the Collective War Center, and the citizens of Lafayette. The city must install a memorial plaque that recognizes and honors the forgotten babies, children, women, and men buried in Henning's Potter Field in the Lafayette Cemetery, and also tell the story why this happened. At the time, the city was under the influence of the Ku Klux Klan. Segregation of Latinos, Catholics, and the poor was a practice at the Lafayette Cemetery. The city council clerk, Henry Mathias, has ties to KKK and did not keep the records of the Henning plots where these babies, children, and women were buried. The town board, or what you call it, town council, knew this practice, the policy, for years. Practice was going on. The city had the duty of accuracy of document burials in the Lafayette Cemetery, including the Henning burials, but did not. Counsel, you did support the naming of the swimming pool, the Rose La Rara Pool, and a plaque was sent inside the recreation center. Counsel, you did support Susan Booker and Rachel Hansen, the historical exhibit panels of racism and discrimination at the Lafayette Swim Pool in 1934. By the way, counsel, the city did receive the Caroline Bancroft Award from History Colorado. Counsel, you did support Susan Booker and Rachel Hansen to allow them to put up a sign outside the recreation center telling the Rose La Rara story and the discrimination the Latino community members faced in 1934. Counsel, it is time for you to allow Monty Stevens to install a memorial plaque to recognize and honor the forgotten babies, children, women, and men with their names on the plaques, who we know were buried in Henning's Potter Fields, and also to tell the story of what happened. The failure by the city of Lafayette not to record the Henning burials at the Lafayette Cemetery was and is a crime against humanity. And it was a criminal conspiracy by the city of Lafayette during all that early times. We must have an underground radar survey to be conducted to find where these babies, children, women, and men are buried in the cemetery and contact the families and put some type of other memorial up for them individually. LULAC is a very powerful organization. Since 1929, they supported the Brown California segregation issue. Under Johnson, they went ahead and started Head Start. They're in 35 states and in Puerto Rico. They have 135,000 members. They're very strong, very attorneys, and they went through a cemetery issue like this before. And they're willing to come in with their attorneys in that if something doesn't get done here. This racism and discrimination and hiding the truth, it has to stop. It's not all your fault. It was the past what happened with the white supremacies that went on in this community of Lafayette here. I really truly ask you, before it has to go that far, comply with Monty. Monty's agreed. The friends are there. From what I understand, it's up to counsel once again to give the permission to put up a plaque. He's already done this before with Rachel Hansen and Susan Booker and the Human Rights Commission. I've been coming to you for many, many moons now, trying to educate you all. And as I always said, education is our greatest tool in understanding and combating racism and discrimination. It is most essential, most essential. I hope you all do the right thing and allow Monty to put that plaque up within the cemetery. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have Preston Padden.
Good evening. I'm Preston Padden. I live at 2389 Indian Peaks Trail in Lafayette. I want to begin by saying my wife Barbara and I have the greatest respect for the members of this council, the acting administrator, counsel, and staff. Three issues I want to talk about very briefly. The first is that 1,375 citizens signed a petition asking the city to not annex the land at the southwest corner of 287 and Arapaho. And that petition was presented to the council and staff. And I'm sorry to say that we've received zero feedback from staff. I, call me naive, but I just, I kept being sure that the staff was going to call at some point and say, "Come in. We'd like to talk to you about citizen concerns. We, the staff, can share with you possibly countervailing concerns." Nothing, zero. Meanwhile, I believe the staff spent countless hours meeting with the developers. And I know from an email I received from staff that staff views the developers as their customers, not the citizens of Lafayette, the developers, including developers from Illinois. So I was stunned to learn that there's a staff recommendation to begin the annexation process tonight. And as staff candidly acknowledged in the email to me, the timing is driven by the developers' private contractual deadlines in their agreement. And I would request that you delay your decision tonight until the staff shows the citizens of Lafayette the courtesy of sitting down with us and hearing us out. My idea about how a city should operate is that the citizens should be the customers of the staff, not out-of-town developers. The second issue is the water infrastructure deficit. I understand it's $150 million deficit for water infrastructure that will result in endless steep rate hikes for consumer water bills. If I was in your shoes, I'd do two things. First, I would look hard for means other than just raising consumer water bills to make up that deficit. I understand you're constrained by Tabor, but there must be some other ways you can raise money. And secondly, I would look for ways to responsibly reduce that deficit. Look for projects that are included currently in that deficit that maybe you don't have to do. And I would point out the Goose Haven project, which Public Works Director Jeff Arthur said in a report to the council in 2020, quote, "While this project will have substantially higher operating costs than other water sources and require substantial new infrastructure and will only be functional during a limited range of scenarios, it nonetheless previously was determined to be a viable project." I call that damning something by faint praise. I would look hard at reducing that deficit by abandoning the Goose Haven project. Finally, the third topic, a crosswalk for the playground on IP Trail between Red Feather and Sleeping Owl Point. The city made a deal with the developer of Indian Peaks to only have to put sidewalks on one side of the road instead of on both sides like everywhere else in Lafayette. And the sidewalk is on the west side. The playground and the pathway from our community to Wanaka Lake are on the east side, and it's a blind curve. And many pedestrians, including young children, have to cross there. And we've asked the city staff to put in a crosswalk there. There currently is none. And ideally, one with one of those buttons you push that creates flashing lights to warn the traffic. And the staff responded that they don't have any money. And if you respond to only one of the points that I raised tonight, I would beg you, please, ask the staff to find the money to put a crosswalk at that playground and pathway to Wanaka Lake so that we don't have a tragedy there. Thank you all very much, and I really, I can't thank you enough for sitting here and listening all night to people like me blathering on about their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next we have Vicki Eulen.
Hi, I'm Vicki Eulen, 303 West Simpson Street. As I often do, I'm going to agree with what Frank Archuleta said. I am very much in favor of a plaque observing what happened at the cemetery. I think that council and the boards and commissions have been really good at correcting some of the issues that we've had, racial issues over the years. And I think that this needs to be corrected, explained, and corrected as well. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the survey, the ballot issue survey. You know, reading through the comments, and I read a lot of them before I, you know, ran out of time. And, I mean, I think it was quite clear that people, that people didn't understand the survey. It wasn't very well worded. It was, the various questions were difficult to answer. And so, I mean, I think a lot of people were thinking that the survey was asking, should we allow non-residents to serve on boards? And, you know, this is, the last time we had a ballot issue on the council, the city ballot, we did surveys as well. And I, at that time, spoke against having surveys. I understand that ballot issues cost money, but so do surveys. And I frankly think they're undemocratic. I mean, they skew, you know, we've got 1,000 people, 1,000 people's responses as to whether you guys should put this on the ballot. What I think you need to do is put on the ballot and let it sink or swim. That's what our country was founded on. You make a ballot issue, people vote. They don't fill out a survey beforehand, especially a survey that's designed to manipulate or influence. And frankly, I think this one backfired on you guys because now people think that they're going to be voting not to allow residents rather than not to allow non-voters on boards. So just hope that you will consider that. I mean, the surveys about ballot issues started with Fritz, and I think they should end with Fritz's tenure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Chelsea Pennington-Hahn.
Hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Chelsea Pennington-Hahn. I am the director of the Lafayette History Museum, located at 108 East Simpson Street. I am here tonight to also voice support, voice support for the installation of a memorial plaque at the Lafayette Cemetery. For almost a year now, Frank Archuleta, Doug Connerow, and David Simono have been doing in-depth research into the complicated history of burials in the Potter Field area of the cemetery. Many historic cemeteries have a Potter Field, have a Potter Field, also known as a poppers field or a public cemetery. These were intended for the burials of people who didn't have money to purchase a plot or whose identities were unknown. The largest of these is Hart Island in New York City, which has almost a million burials. Closer to home here in Colorado, there are many historic cemeteries with Potter Fields, such as Linwood Cemetery in Glenwood Springs, Block 12 of Riverside Cemetery in Denver, and Evergreen Cemetery in Leadville. As often happens, the confluence of class, race, and power means that the history surrounding Potter Fields isn't cut and dry. The research into the Lafayette Cemetery has shown that the burial locations and the records of those burials isn't always reliable and was influenced by systemic racism. Even though the situation is by no means unique to Lafayette, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't face it head-on and address it as best we can. The Potter Fields I mentioned earlier had similar issues of unmarked graves, unknown burial sites, and unreliable record-keeping. And they've all undertaken projects to acknowledge that history, whether through finding guides, memorial plaques, or new grave markers. With that in mind, the Lafayette History Museum supports placing a plaque in Lafayette Cemetery to provide context to the cemetery and Potter Field and to honor the people excluded from its history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Toni Munoz.
Hi, council members. My name's Toni Munoz, and I am a lifetime member of Lafayette. I am an active member of the Lafayette Catholic Church. I'm a member of the Ladies Auxiliary, lifetime member. I go to the Rec Center. I'm very active in this community. And I'm here also to ask that we put up a plaque to memorialize what we've done at Plodgers Field also. I'm here for the voices that can't speak anymore, for the babies, the citizens of Lafayette, friends and families of those members. We hope that we can recognize our wrongdoings and do our best to make up for the disrespect we have shown to the deceased. Please put yourself in their shoes, and then you will know how important this is to correct this wrong. We must face our mistakes and do not do our best to not allow it to happen again. We must pay our condolences, apologize, learn, and teach others what not to do that we have done. Without the memorial, it could go unnoticed, and it might happen again. As a community member of Lafayette, let's keep working to grow closer in love and kindness towards each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Doug Connerow.
Mayor, councilors, Doug Connerow, 513 East Elm Street in Lafayette. So the summer marks a grim milestone in the history of Lafayette in the 100-year anniversary of the formation of the Ku Klux Klan clavering in Lafayette. And we know their history of racism. We know their history of intimidation. We know they're anti-Catholic. They're anti, they were enforcing the prohibition. And I get asked, well, you know, boy, that was part of our past 100 years ago. It's a terrible thing, but how does it affect us today? We're a better society. We know better. We act better in many ways, thankfully. And then David Simono comes along, six months ago, nine months ago, tries to find his grandfather in the Lafayette Cemetery, and had a heck of a time doing that, and had a heck of a time of cooperation with, from this city. Found the Henning records, the George Henning records, which is a map of burials in the northern part of the Lafayette Cemetery. Almost none of them are on city records. They're predominantly Latinos on that map. They're primarily infants and babies because they're buried, each plot is four foot by nine foot. Four children buried in one plot. None of them are on the records of the city of Lafayette. We know that they were buried there. There's a public record of it in the newspaper. The newspaper says the Durand's buried an infant at the Lafayette Cemetery. George Henning coordinated it. Father Roberts was the officiant. We have, we have those. We have that evidence of the many. And we're uncovering more. We get more every, not every day. I don't have that much time to devote to it. And the Catholic Church has a record of all these burials. And we have the Archdiocese sent over a stack of burials of deaths of all, up to recent times, really, of the same people buried in the Lafayette Cemetery. And there's no record anywhere in the city that those individuals, adults and babies, are in that cemetery. At the very least, that would raise some questions. If I worked for city staff, and I'm different, obviously, I'd be like, wow, this is an interesting discovery. Let's find out more about this. And, no. The difficulty I have with that is that you demand, and I've heard it from your mouths, "We need to know more history from the underserved and underprivileged residents of this town." I've heard it a half dozen times at least. I don't pay that close of attention, but I know I've heard it from you. You need to put those words into action because this is the story of this underserved community, is that cemetery and what happened there. In addition to Rose La Rara, and what happened to her, she stood up to the Ku Klux Klan, and they had a horrible grasp of this community in the, and they were city officials, and they sat in these very seats. It wasn't here. It was down on Simpson Street, and dominated this community from 1923 to 1935. A horrible time. It's not your fault. It's not anybody on the city staff's fault, but it's something that we have to reckon with. And the sign, the interpretive sign is one way to do that. I firmly believe that, and it needs to be a collaborative effort. The sign, the Rose La Rara sign at the pool was a collaborative effort, endorsed by city council. It brought together many members of the community, including Marjorie McIntosh. She was critical in history. It brought, it brought together the Historical Society. I helped with it. Frank helped with it. The Human Rights Commission was instrumental in helping with that. That needs to happen with this, and you need to give those instructions. We need an interpretive sign. We need a collaborative effort. Let Monty handle his, and don't micromanage Monty. Let Monty handle it. We pay Monty to do this kind of thing, to put up interpretive signs. So I ask you to move forward with this, make it a priority, devote money to it, and let's move on, and we'll work on the next problem that the Klan created, and there are more.
All right, thank you. I'm not seeing any more yellow forms, but I know some folks arrived a little bit late. So if you do wish to speak, please grab a yellow form in the back to fill it out. But go ahead, Ms. Norbeck. You can go first, and then afterwards, please, so now. And pass it over.
Karen Norbeck, 800 East Geneseo. I just have to add my voice to the voices about the cemetery. We need to act, and we need to act now. This is, it's an outrageous story. It's another one. It's another part of our history. Doug says it so well. So many of the others have too. This doesn't reflect on anybody that's here now. It's not, there's no guilt from not doing anything in the past. We need to act now. It's, it makes no sense to do nothing. We have to act. We have to do something to acknowledge what happened in the past. And if it's putting up a sign, if it, Mayor Pro Tem wants a bench, we need to do something. Let's not put it off any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dartha, any other members of the public? All right, are there any other members of the public that wish to speak? All right, I'm not seeing any. I'm also not seeing any callers online. And then the rest of the forums, please wait for our public hearing, which should be coming up shortly. So I'll close public input, and we'll move forward with the consent agenda. We have a few items. We have Item A, August 1, 2023, City Council Meeting Minutes. Item B, Resolution Number 2023-44, calling an election for November 7, 2023, designating the city clerk as the election officer and authorizing the city clerk to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Boulder County Clerk and Recorder. Item C, Contract Design Scape's Colorado Inkwood Zero Scape Conversion Project. And Item D, Contract Asenza Architecture with Bob L. Berger Recreation Center Pool Renovation. Council, like to pull any item. Now we'll take a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? One needs to do a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Briggs?
Yes.
Mayor Monget?
Yes.
Counselor Madrano?
Yes.
Counselor Sampson?
Yes.
Counselor Walton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wong?
Yes.
And Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Right. Okay, well, moving on our agenda, we're on to presentations. We have the Communities That Care Pilot Program update, and we have lots of guests in the room. Thank you all for joining us this evening, we're excited to see what you were able to accomplish over the past year. Do we have folks that are speaking tonight? Come on up. So we'll give the floor to you all, and you know, take your time and kind of share what you were able to get done with some of the support you received from the city, and then we'll probably open up to some questions afterwards.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Hi, everybody. So I'm Jen Korbelik, I'm here as a member of the Youth Spaces team, and I'm joined by Veronica San Gabriel, who served as our community ambassador, coordinating with the program sites and families, and then Kristin Davidson, who provided support and evaluation. And then also in the audience, we have Tom Hardy, who's part of our team, he's the owner of Confluence Small Business Collective, and he provided space for some of our community events, and for some of the programming sites, and then for all of our meetings. And then we have Andy McCullough, who has served as our fiscal agent. And so tonight, yes, I want to let you know about the, tonight we want to talk to you about the results of the pilot, some of the pilot impacts, and then talk to you about next steps, one of which is requesting, as you're entering into your budget process, consideration for one more round of funding. So to let you know about the pilot, so the pilot concept, as we talked to you all about last year, is the concept came out of a Communities That Care Subcommittee that was focused on creating pro-social opportunities for young people in Lafayette. And as our CTC research showed, that participating in these types of activities reduces crime and reduces substance abuse and increases mental health and commitment to school. So we really wanted to pilot this concept to see what could we do if we created a coordinated system of existing opportunities in the community to support young people in out-of-school And so the key components of the pilot were, like I said, coordinating existing programs in Lafayette, and then trying to remove barriers that are typical to access for low-income families, especially monolingual speaking families. And so that was transportation costs and language access. And so what we did is we partnered with some community agencies who provide opportunities for young people in Lafayette, and we, during the spring and summer of this past year, we created a pilot where students from middle school and high school would participate in activities from these participating organizations. So we had the YMCA provided transportation, and they also provided an esports program, and then, so these programs would happen one each day. So one day would go to the Y for the esports, and then they would go to the library, to the Makerspace, and then they would go to Foxtrot's Music, provided a music production workshop. And then over the summer, we had the Lafayette REC Center provided some classes on using the fitness equipment at the REC Center, did some sports, outside sports with them, and then trips to the water park. And then the Center for Musical Arts provided musical lessons and music rentals. And I also neglected to say that the Arts Hub, where it says "The Muse," it's really supposed to say "The Arts Hub," and the Arts Hub provided some dance classes for us. And then the way we spent the money that you allowed us to use last year was really
get in trouble because it's the age where after school they can do many good things,
on the, so promotion of activities, the recruitment, the enrollment, and community events, so
but 100% many, many bad things.
This year, thanks to a grant from the City of Lafayette's Public Safety Tax for
community celebrations after each of the sessions, and some other community events
Youth Crime Prevention, we've been able to create a solution for this.
to bring families and the community together.
We knew we would have the best impact and widest reach by coordinating efforts with
And then decentralized activities were the scholarships for the students to attend the
existing programming in our community.
programs, and for snacks and other pieces like that.
CTC is acting as the hub by connecting with community partners like Foxtrot's Music,
And then the transportation and coordination, and then we had the support from, the fiscal
the YMCA, the Arts Hub, and the libraries Makerspace.
Communities That Care is a national evidence-based model, so that means it uses proven practices
support from Global Services. And so after that quick tour of the pilot, how we, the key pieces of the pilot, we have
to create community systems change.
We realized that coming together to create this collective was really serving the needs
a video that we'd like to share that really kind of tells the story of the pilot.
of these individual organizations, and I think will really better serve the needs of youth and their families in Lafayette.
Even after just a few months, we have heard amazing feedback from parents and teachers. Students feel more creative, confident, and have made new friends during their participation. Since the Youth Spaces program has started, parents have felt more welcomed into the community, and the students have told us they feel less stressed now that they have something to look forward to after school.
The distance between them and a career in music and working in a studio or doing live sound, that distance is shorter than they might realize.
I wasn't like really into like making music, like I never had that in mind until I met Max, and he showed me, I felt that like brought me a lot of joy.
She even goes happy to go to school because she knows after school she's going to go do something that's going to relax her, that she's going to be enjoying with her friends.
This gives kids a better opportunity to like socialize more and be more themselves.
We really identified this opportunity to, you know, leverage what's already in the community first, and see what works. Maybe there's just a reason that all the kids aren't getting there between transportation and finances, you know, what can we really do? What can we really start with? And what do people really want, and what's going to work?
The Youth Spaces Pilot Program has been successful in serving the Lafayette community by providing free access to local activities with transportation and bilingual support. Students shared that they felt a sense of belonging and enjoyed making new friends and learning new skills.
They are learning and spending their time in a good way. Youth Space has been a big, big benefit for the kids that they're attending now.
Our goal is to continue providing a safe, engaging, and nurturing environment for the youth of Lafayette to explore their creativity and passions. Ultimately, we hope that Youth Spaces Lafayette will inspire and empower the next generation of Lafayette's leaders, artists, and innovators.
Okay, and then Veronica and Kristin are going to share a little bit about the impacts of the pilot.
Yeah, just to reiterate some of the successes that were named in the video, that we provided a connection to our spaces. The families in the pilot program said that they had not accessed these spaces in the past, and the leaders of the organizations that were involved said that they had tried to reach the Latino community and youth to be part of their programs many times in the past with different forms of outreach, but that we were successful in doing so. I'd say skipping to the bottom bullet there, we were successful in doing so because of Veronica's role as a community ambassador. She was well-trusted in the community and really able to recruit and retain families, you know, in a way that really worked for the families in our community. Both the kids and the parents talked about how much they appreciated having new learning experiences. When we asked them, "What would you be doing otherwise if you weren't here in the program?" They responded in some way they would be bored at home, watching TV on their phones, hanging out in the neighborhood, and we said, "Would you rather be here or doing that?" And they said, "Here, absolutely." They enjoyed learning all new things. I mean, the power of putting a musical instrument into these kids' hands this summer, when they had a lot of time on their hands, I mean, it was just incredible to behold. They also reported on questionnaires, an increased sense of belonging, safety, and connection to a trusted adult than they had in their schools and communities, and just the power of the relationships that were built among kids and the mentoring that happened across ages because we had kids from both middle school and high school. Veronica is going to share just a couple quick stories from parents and families about the impact as well, several of whom are here tonight.
Hello, everybody, good night, and my name is Veronica San Gabriel. We had parents here tonight to show their support for the impact that this program has had on their kids. You also saw letters from parents in the report asking for those opportunities to continue and be offered to more kids in Lafayette. Several kids, they experienced bullying in school and didn't want to go to school because of it, but after meeting with them and their parents, they want to join the program. From there, they were attending almost every day, made new friends, and feel welcome. Some kids were experiencing depression and risk to suicide, but we were able to be creative in the program and develop relationship with other kids and trusted adults. Parents also said their kids were less stressed, happier, and more agreeable at home. Some kids had arrived recently from other countries with big trauma in their lives. They were able to learn both English and Spanish. The program put musical instruments in their hands and offered them a positive way to spend their time and expand what they can imagine in for their lives. I hope you will consider how important this program is for the community and for those kids. Thank you.
So yeah, like you've heard, the pilot was really, it was successful beyond our expectations for something that, you know, we just, was an idea we tested out, so we were really, really excited with the success. And so, as I said at the beginning, we'd like to request, as you're doing, entering into your budget process, consideration for one more round as we look for sustainable funding sources for the program. So, thank you. Any questions for us?
All right, well, yeah, thank you so much for coming together and putting that presentation, for bringing a lot of the students and families you impacted, and it's really nice to see so many new faces, and hopefully we'll be able to see them again, but joining us for our meeting tonight. So we'll open it up to council to see if you have any follow-up questions for either the folks from CTC or for staff. Counselor Walton?
Thank you, thank you so much, Jen, it's nice to see you, and it's really nice to see such a full house tonight. Thank you all for being here, and I really appreciate those members of the community who've stepped up, not just on this program, but I know many of you have been involved with CTC or in other aspects of the community in a lot of ways, and so I'm really happy that there seem to be a lot of intersections here that have come together, so I really applaud the success that you're reporting to us tonight. Thank you so much for the presentation and for being here. I'm curious to understand how this project and this pilot may evolve, should we consider to continue granting the money to you?
Yeah, well, I think what we are hoping to do is expand the number of kiddos who can participate and the number of programming sites. So we feel like we've got this kind of core piece of a model, and so we feel like now we kind of have a springboard to grow and to, yeah, work with other community organizations to get into more, you know, more into the schools. We did a great job getting into Angivine Middle School, and would like to, you know, it seems like freshman sophomores is kind of as high as the interest rate or interest is.
That really rolled right on your tongue, didn't it?
The interest rate for the program, no. So it seems like the interest goes till about 10th grade, and so, but we would like to put some more energy into looking at what opportunities might be appealing for the early high school age as well.
I think some of the words that really resonated with me that I know are issues that we consistently hear is the concept of these spaces, so I like that that is sort of the, that seems to be sort of the title of your project. I like that, and I would encourage that because I think that what I see and what I'm excited about is the opportunity that while as a city, there really hasn't been a lot of change, this money, we have continued to invest in trying to look and seek and find that, and so I kind of like that concept of the Youth Spaces continuing. The community ambassador, I know that that's a big part too of kind of the model of CTC, I believe, and so that and what you're able to do and kind of bring that to life, I think, is really interesting. And then I think there are just a lot of continuing intersections. There's certainly through the Nature Kids Program and the success of that program that started probably eight years ago now, the community engagement that has been part of that program. I think that there are sort of a lot of different, I mean, that's sort of a similar kind of concept here where there were a lot, it was a lot of different programming happening with a, you know, single mission and some money behind it, and so I would encourage that, you know, where there are opportunities and there probably are some overlapping people involved, or maybe even some of the organizations, that maybe just there are, there's sort of a force multiplier there that maybe can be discovered and discussed a little bit more with that program. Either lessons learned that can be shared both ways, but maybe a meeting of, kind of a get-together, how that can maybe come together. I also am very interested in the city becoming more involved because I feel like if there, you know, if this money is getting behind it, I like that you have the Lafayette REC on there, but what more could there be? And I think that I would invite you, you all as a community, to push the city, push the council for asking for more of what you need and what that looks like. I think come with specifics, it seems like the city and the council will start to react to specifics more. And so there are lots of ways that that can happen, whether it's kind of a continued program using these funds, or intersecting with the Lafayette youth, and there just are sort of a lot of those kinds of things happening. The other thing that I wanted to raise as a potential opportunity, as the liaison to the Lafayette Open Space Advisory Committee, I had become aware of a lot of reporting around the skate park and the outdoor classroom of some, you know, negative behavior that your mission for CTC would certainly benefit and could perhaps influence a group of kids that are reported to be perhaps conducting some activity that is, you know, just causing some damage, some trash, some reported behavior that I know that the Open Space staff has become concerned with and law enforcement has gotten involved. I also am very interested in the city becoming more involved, because I feel like if there, you know, if this money's getting behind it, I like that you have the Lafayette rec on there. But what more could there be? And I think that I would invite you, you all as a community, to push the city, push the council for asking for more of what you need and what that looks like. I think come with specifics. It seems like the city and the council will start to react to specifics more. And so there are lots of ways that that can happen, whether it's kind of a continued program using these funds, or intersecting with the Lafayette youth. And there just are sort of a lot of those kinds of things happening. The other thing that I wanted to raise as a potential opportunity, as the liaison to the Lafayette Open Space Advisory Committee, I had become aware of a lot of reporting around the skate park and the outdoor classroom of some, you know, negative behavior that your mission for CTC would certainly benefit and could perhaps influence a group of kids that are reported to be perhaps conducting some activity that is, you know, just causing some damage, some trash, some reported behavior that I know that the Open Space staff has become concerned with and law enforcement has gotten involved with. And so, you know, I know that, you know, Chief Basher is involved in this, in CTC. I don't know what the intersection is there, but I, while I applaud the positivity of this kind of a program, there are other pockets in the community where there continues to be opportunities. So I just wanna bring that to your attention, and perhaps, you know, this program isn't the right thing maybe for that group of people, but what is? And just challenge you to continue to seek opportunities and keep talking to the city about what other programs and funding may be needed.
When it is just a good point about, right, like Veronica said, that there are, right, hundreds of bad things that young people can be getting involved with. And I think, yeah, that is, the goal is to find what are activities that are appealing, because I know another piece of the pilot and something that we would like to investigate more if we are granted continued funding is looking more, you know, originally the coalition wanted to look at developing a youth center. And when doing research realized that is just, it's a really big lift. I mean, you need to get a space, you need to staff it, you need to program it. And, you know, to your point about the different offerings, I mean, in youth center, you can get kind of limited. So in terms, what we found is by partnering with these organizations, I think we can create those synergies and try to find opportunities. But something we also do want to test out is that concept of a space. So trying to have some events at Confluence, or other other, at the Y, or other locations around town that really are more kind of that youth hangout space. So maybe they're coming somewhere else instead of doing back things at the skate park or... So I think testing, you know, what are those different opportunities and venues and types of activities is something that we'd like to continue to do. So, yeah, thanks.
All right. Questions from other councilors? Counselor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. More comments and questions, and bridging off of what Counselor Walton said about being able to continue to create activities so that there's an activity that, from the youth who aren't occupied doing things that maybe is not best for the community. And Nature Kids came to mind. Thank you for bringing that up. It's a community effort that Nature Kids conceives, and that is connected to place. And for these youths to say they feel more like they belong is gold. And taking that and the concept of Nature Kids, and I don't know if Mark Ogles All Careers concept is a part of what you're thinking, but that
Perhaps, yeah.
If they're learning how to do things they didn't think they could do, like music, there are enough, like IOT things, that they can create what they want in order to help them understand what's going on. And right where the skate park is, right behind that, is an amazing place to intersect with our community and nature and our environment right next to the skate park. There's some music on top of that. I'm gonna take it right back to hip-hop. That's what it's about, right?
No, you're saying, you're saying questions.
It's the dancing. It's the art that goes with it. So I think we're right on the brim of like figuring out how to tie all those pieces together in a way that, you know, hip-hop's more than, it's more than just the music.
Yep.
It's the feeling. Capoeira, where you bring family together. There's a space-place. And have some of the students who do have an idea of what's going on check the other students and say like, hey, no, you really can become part of this community. And I think we have all the ingredients that we need and the structure's in place. I would hope we can find funding for another round. So thank you for sharing.
Other questions or comments from council? Counselor Sampson?
First of all, thank you. I know it's really difficult to start up a pilot project, so you obviously had to put a lot of work in. So thank you for that, and some really amazing results coming out of this. My first question is, did you apply for any other grants along with this? Or have you applied for any other grants to, you said next steps? There was only one. I didn't know if you were doing other next steps.
Yeah, so we plan to apply for other funding opportunities. Yeah, yes. We're not just relying on you. And I know last year we said, we're coming for one-time funds. And we figure, like, since we feel like, yeah, we have something that's working, you know, we just need another bridge to really feel like, yeah, how can we spend some time? I mean, I think that's another piece of, how can we spend some time to really start looking at what are some sustainable funding sources for this work? And like you're saying, Counselor Barnes, you know, where, and Walton, like, where are some of those synergies and connections where we can leverage funds to maybe have a bigger impact? So that's definitely part of the plan.
Sure.
Yeah.
My other question's more finance as well. You said program coordination and transportation was 25,000. I thought I heard you say that the Y contributed in kind for the transportation. Is that, is that really just program coordination that you use that amount, or?
So they provided some of the transportation in kind. So we did have to kick in a little bit of funding for the transportation.
And then what did you find your indirect costs were in terms of this? It says global services. What does that mean?
So Andy served as our fiscal agent. No, let him.
Andy, if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself first.
My name's Andy Mappala. I live at 1319 Alexandria Street, Lafayette. So just to kind of give you how global, I've been a part of Community Care from the beginning, and I'm under Global Service Associate. So it sort of evolved, like a need to have a place for some easy funding, of people that wanted, especially wanted tax deduction. So we started doing things right after 2020, when things were opening up. We were doing a mass project with Angivine. And it was mass project. It was non-perishable items, gift cards for families in need. And these people donated. We had businesses and individuals that wanted tax deduction. So we just ran it through Global Service. It was just an easy way. I have an initiative called Bridges of Opportunity, and it's all based in Lafayette. And it's, it comes out of six years of partnering with a community partnership, Ryan Elementary, helping refugee communities here in Lafayette assimilate, things like that. And so then in 2021, we did a vaccine clinic, same thing. We had a grant from Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, but they didn't cover food, and we wanted to get free tacos. We did an equity clinic, and so same thing, people donated. So we did that. And then we had a grant through Luminate Colorado 2021. So we ran it through that. So it's sort of been kind of that piece of just why we're in this position right now, of having a place to do the fiscal side, and so they can provide some of the fiscal aspects of that.
And so if I'm, if I'm understanding your question, so you were talking about the indirect costs, so went to the management of the payments to the different
Like a bookkeeper, paying a bookkeeper.
And paying the different program sites for the kiddos that sign up. Yeah.
It was all the bookkeeping. So like, we're paying the Art Hub and things like that, the administration.
So they would call, you would talk to them, is what you were doing?
Yeah, they would send an invoice.
You were coordinating programs. You were coordinating administrative and financial
Right. When they would send an invoice, we would pay it out.
Wonderful. Thank you. That answers my question.
Sorry. Sorry about that.
All right. Other questions from council? Do you have more to your presentation?
No.
I do have questions, but for staff in terms of figuring out where we go from here.
Okay.
So feel free to take a seat if you'd like. And thank you for joining us this evening. We'll call you up if other questions pop up.
Correct.
So my question for staff is, so where do we go from here? We have this amount of funding. We still haven't, we haven't earmarked it for anything for the year of 2023 yet, correct? That's still up in the air. If we don't use it this year, it'll roll over to next year. So we'll, we'll have, you know, twice the amount. So now it's just considering, you know, option one, do we re-reward, you know, the CTC program with the same amount of funding? Do we do it partially? Do we wait for a future meeting where we have other folks that may be interested in this, or other opportunities? You know, and before I ask council that question, I want to check with staff to see if we have anything upcoming on our agendas, where we will be discussing this particular item.
Yeah, so on August 28th, we're gonna do the introduction to the 2024 budget. And part of that conversation, I would like to have a more broader discussion about some of these different pockets of funding that we have that are for similar purposes, i.e. one Lafayette, this funding in conjunction with our new mental health and human services tax, and kind of how do we want to bring all of these funding sources together? And how do we want to start to discuss what programs we want to use? So it's more of the proactive versus somebody coming in and asking for them. And so we can kind of outline the next few years of what those funding would be. So I anticipate starting that conversation in 13 days.
So if we start that on the 28th, and then, sorry, Jen, I do have a question for your team as well. So if you are, are you anticipating to restart this program in the fall if you were awarded the funds?
Yeah.
So when would you start?
Well, as soon as we could, what we'd like to do is, you know, a couple weeks into the school year.
Yeah, which is
ASAP, I guess is what I'm saying.
Which is like, right now, right?
Tomorrow.
Yeah. And so, do you have any leftover funds, or are those expired?
We have about $1,000 left.
Okay. So you would need to, so I guess what I'm getting at is, I understand that we're planning on having that conversation very soon. And I know these guys, if we are interested in continuing this specific program, you know, we would need, we would need to let them know as soon as possible so they can get started for the fall.
Yeah, if you want to discuss it tonight as well for the 2023 funds, that's fine, or we will do it in a few weeks. We wanted to give you at least the initial information.
Thank you. So if we were to, let's see, I'm just looking at the calendar here. So we have that workshop on the 28th. Our first meeting in September is the 5th. We could potentially make a decision that night. How does council feel about when, timing of that? I'm okay with waiting for the 5th. Does that work for you and your program?
September 5th.
Yeah, if we make a call on this.
Yeah, I think if we know that that's kind of around the time that we would know, I think we can start, you know, just making plans accordingly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is that right with council?
These are a lot of the 2023 funds, correct?
Yeah. Okay. And that way, we'll have time to go through the workshop first to figure out, maybe there's more?
Kind of a strategy.
Yeah, more money.
I'm okay discussing it tonight.
And, go ahead.
So are we saying that we, we would be voting on it the 5th, just to ensure that we understand how it relates to the other?
Well, I guess, yeah. Oh, so I think Deputy Dolly, or City Minister Dolly, if you want to jump in, but I'm thinking it's, it might be more strategic for us to wait for, after the workshop on the 28th, because then we're talking about not just this particular funding here from the public safety tax from 2015 or whatever year it was. We're also tying in the mental health and human services tax that we have, all these other pockets of money that could go towards youth services.
It could be some of that rebate money from the Broncos.
Yeah, because it doesn't really matter where the money comes from, as long as the money's there for them, you know what I mean?
I just wanted, thank you. I was just, I wanted clarification that there is potentially some additional support for this.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean, you can, you know, we can let them know it's coming.
Like, yeah, it might be. Yeah, okay. I think, yeah, I just think it's more strategic for all of us, if that's all right. If that's good with you. Counselor Briggs? All right. Well, then we'll can leave it at that. And we just, once again, want to thank you all for packing the chamber, bringing everyone that's been impacted positively by these programs, and for putting together that presentation, and for serving the youth. I mean, that's the number one thing we need here in Lafayette, to keep students occupied with fun, enjoyable activities that actually are meaningful. So thank you.
And we just really thank you for the opportunity to try this out with us here. So we really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you all for coming in. So you can hang out, or head, it's up to you, whatever you want to do. But we're talking about ballot survey right now.
Want to give them a couple minutes to clear the chamber?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
I have no babysitter.
All right, I got you. Yes.
You have Maya.
Oh, we should have called her.
Call her right now.
That didn't stop her from just playing. It's an ice cream shop for everyone, right in front of parents.
So like, she
Those are transitionees. We can get our next group speakers up. So we're onto regular business. This is an item. Items related to board and commission ballots, survey measure, including board and commission ballot measure survey results, and first reading of Board and 17 ballot measure regarding board and commission qualifications for office. Take it away.
Quite the mouthful. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to, in partnership with David Flaherty of Magellan Strategies, to present results from the recent board and commission ballot measure survey, and then also present an ordinance for council's consideration. So this presentation will take part, take place in two parts. The first is focused just on the survey results, where we'll provide an overview of those results, and then hold an opportunity for city council questions and discussion, and then present the ordinance for council's consideration. So before handing it over to David, I just want to remind everyone in the room and city council that we're here before you this evening because it's based on some feedback from the February workshop to conduct this ballot measure poll between March and July. Staff worked with Magellan Strategies to create and conduct the poll, and we're here tonight to present the results in August because the, to put this question to the voters, because it is a charter amendment, would require an ordinance and two readings of that ordinance. So we're here tonight to not only share the results, but also present the first reading of the ordinance, to then have time to get it before council at the September 5th meeting, if it is approved this evening, before the Boulder County deadline on September 8th. So I will now pass it to David with Magellan Strategies to go for the results.
Thanks, Alex. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing us to manage this unique survey project for you. My name is David Flaherty. I'm the head of Magellan Strategies. Our company does surveys for government, school districts, and special districts across Colorado. And we've been around for 15 years. And this was a unique survey, and I know there's been some public comment about it. Let's talk about what this survey project entailed. We worked on this survey script for three months. There were 10 iterations of this survey questionnaire. It was distributed outside staff to public groups who had an interest in this ballot proposal. So please keep that in mind. It was not done in a, in a black box. And it was challenging. We made our best effort to explain some relatively complicated, yet straightforward changes to the requirements to serve on a city border commission. The survey interviewed 1,087 residents in Lafayette, Colorado. The survey instrument used was bilingual in both Spanish and English. It was distributed through MMS texting, which, as you can see right here, this has been very effective. We reached or invited at least half of the registered voter and resident population of the city to participate in the survey. The survey was also posted and promoted through the city's website and its social media channels. The margin of error on a 1,000 sample size survey is plus or minus 2.9% at the 95% confidence interval. So if we did the survey 100 times, the measurements that we show you among the top line results will be within three percentage points above or below. Okay, it's very important for you to understand the dramatic differences in the demographics of voter turnout. This is very much in play in this survey because of the differences of opinion regarding this proposal among younger and older voters. The survey results were weighted to be representative of an odd-year turnout. And what I mean by that is, and I know this is a lot of numbers, but if you go back and look at what turnout was in the 2021 and 2019 elections, you will find, most importantly, seniors are the largest voting block, making up 30% of turnout. Therefore, seniors are going to have an influence on the outcome of this ballot measure. Younger voters, 18 to 34, or 35 to 44, also make up about 32%. So please keep that in mind, because if you put this on the ballot next year, it is an entirely different ballgame, where those younger voters that are 18 to 34 and are more likely to consider and support this ballot measure make up 1 out of 4 voters. So please keep that in mind as we interpret and present this data. In a presidential election, this, what we measured would be likely closer than what we've measured. It's an odd year. Older voters are gonna dominate more likely. In a presidential year, where turnout's much higher, it's gonna have a better chance, just for your own education. So please keep that in mind. The survey results also included results by region. I'm glad to say that we had such good engagement that the sample sizes within these six regions I'm glad to say that we had such good engagement that the sample sizes within these six regions are acceptable for you to definitely make decisions around or hang your hat on. We're not talking about 20 interviews per these regions. We're well over 100 in all six. So please keep that in mind. The survey demographics, again, we wanted to move these up to the front. These are the demographics that are representative of an odd year turnout, okay? It's not voter registration. They are the demographics of a likely odd year turnout. We also questioned and asked respondents about their tenure, and there are differences in tenure. Folks that have lived here longer, who tend to be older, versus voters that have been here for less than 10 years. So, okay, we educated and informed respondents right off the gate. Before we begin, we want to clarify that the purpose of this survey is to gather opinions regarding potential changes to the requirements for an individual to volunteer and serve on a city board commission or committee. We need to get the respondent's head on what we're talking about here. We want their thoughts on, okay, this is, makes sense to me, pretty straightforward. But we wanted to be sure that changes did not apply to anybody serving on the city council. Again, this came out of multiple iterations, and I think that was a good message for respondents to understand. Okay, got it, the city council is not going to be applicable to this. Then we introduce the concept of, and educate respondents on what the qualifications are, because they don't know them. So we want to educate them on what they are. As we mentioned, residents can volunteer and serve on a city board or commission or committee, such as cultural arts, human rights, open space, so they understand what we're referring to. And then educating them on three requirements. They must be a registered voter in the city of Lafayette. The individual cannot be in default, meaning the person owes money or is in debt to the city or any other government unit of the state. Third, the individual must be a Lafayette resident for one year prior to the day of the appointment to the border commission. In prior iterations, we then said, okay, in recent years, there have been several ballot measures that have attempted to change these requirements. Before, we were a little bit more specific about those, but due to feedback, we scaled that back and just let folks know this has been on the ballot before. There have been efforts before. Knowing this information, do you think the requirements should stay the same? Or should they, or would you be hoping to considering changes? And among this older population, this older likely turnout, half a voter said, I am fine in keeping things as they are. They don't know at this point in the survey why these changes are going to be considered, or what they may be. But for right now, they don't really seem like much of a difference to me. If you look at the responses to this question by age range, you can already begin to see seniors, 65 and older. Two-thirds of them feel like, it's totally fine to me. Where younger voters, 18 to 44, perhaps are more intuitive, or perhaps about, oh, I've either become more aware of this, but there's obviously more consideration or support, where plurality would consider changes. And then we move on and educate voters and respondents in letting them know, no decisions have been made. This is really important. We want our respondents to know we are listening and learning to our voters in our communities. This is up to you. Your honest opinions are going to have an influence on where we're going to go on this. So please keep that in mind. And again, this is pretty standard on a lot of our service. That way they know that no decisions have been made, you're listening and learning, and so forth. Okay, then we come up with ballot language and introduce the first one, the following ballot language being considered would change the city's board and commission qualification requirements. Please read the ballot measure and indicate if you would vote yes and approve it, or vote no and reject it. And again, this is ballot language that would likely appear on November's ballot as is. This is what we call the uninformed ballot test or ballot measurement. Shall sections four and five of the city home rule charter be amended to eliminate the requirement that all board and commission members be registered voters in the city? Straightforward, we're removing the requirement that you have to be a registered voter in the city. Strong opposition, 75%, are not happy with that. They don't know anything about, or the reasons why. Opposition is also very intense, that said they would definitely vote no and reject it, or probably vote no. Definitely vote no is at 56%. So straight up, as we're going down this path, we have not explained or provided reasons why. Again, this is the uninformed ballot measure. You put this on the ballot today, and the election's next Tuesday, and nobody knows what's going about, and they're going to read it. The results are likely to be in these ranges. Option two, an eternal ballot measure being considered. It would remove the requirement that an individual be a Lafayette registered voter, except for members of the planning commission. So option two, you don't have to be a registered voter unless you're serving on the planning commission. And then we educate and inform them on what the planning commission does, so that they are making a rational and educated response. You know, it's, you know, they deal with land use issues and rezoning subdivisions and so forth. If this measure were on the ballot, so now that you know that, removing voter registration requirement, and except you're on the planning commission, and you have an idea what the planning commission does. Again, strong opposition, 75% no, 53% definitely no. Option three, a third alternative, would remove the requirement that an individual be a Lafayette registered voter for only two members per border commission. This would include the planning commission. Again, remove the requirement that an individual be a Lafayette registered voter for only two members per border commission. Would you vote no and yes, approve, or vote no and reject? And we see that opposition's a little bit higher, 79%. Pretty straightforward. We're not really getting anywhere on just not educating them, okay? Option four, it would remove the requirement that an individual be a Lafayette registered voter for only two members per border commission, and it wouldn't apply to the planning commission. Wouldn't apply to the planning commission on the two option. And again, we fall right back to 75. Again, strong opposition. Okay, now we start to educate and inform, kind of get more to the point. As you may know, one qualification to be a registered voter in Colorado is that the individual is a U.S. citizen. Let's add a little clarity here, okay? Knowing this, are you more likely to support or oppose a change to the city border commission requirements if an individual were required, were required to be a U.S. citizen but not a Lafayette registered voter? As we can see, opposition levels come down to 65%, but they're still very strong. Further education. Now, we're really going to get to the point. We're now going to share information why the city's considering this. And again, outside groups consulted and looked and saw what we were putting together here. After we read them these three pieces of information, we asked them, all right, knowing this, would you vote yes and approve, or vote no and reject? And here's the three that we read, removing, or excuse me, that they read. Removing the Lafayette voter registration requirement could create more diversity on boards and commissions, allowing people from different backgrounds to serve in the community in which they live and provide different perspectives. Again, we're really not getting to the point, but we do on the next two. 51%, oh, I get it, we're looking for more diversity. Obviously, that's positive good, especially in a community like Lafayette. 51% more likely to approve. Some community members have expressed interest in serving on boards and commissions, but cannot because they are not registered to vote in Lafayette due to their immigration status. Getting a little bit more closer to the truth. 48% say, all right, I'm more likely to vote for it now that you're getting somewhere. Finally, removing the voter registration requirement would allow non-citizens, including undocumented immigrants, to serve on board and commission so long as they meet the residency requirement or not in default of the city. I think that last one's getting right to the point. That's what this is about, straightforward, okay? This is diversity, and these are the individuals that we are seeking or looking to serve on our board. So then we say, thank you for reading the information. Now that you've been educated on where we're coming from, okay? And then we ask them again to read the ballot language that we began with. Again, eliminate the requirement that, with the exception of the planning commission, all board and commission members be registered, vote in the city of Lafayette, provided that all but two members are registered voters. And as we concede, now that they're in the loop and they understand exactly what we're going for here, support levels do increase up to 39, and opposition does come down to 50%. So we're looking at a, you know, a more honest conversation here, and we have a chance here of the will of these odd year election turnout voters. 11% undecided, 39% said they approve, 50% no, reject. Look at the differences by subgroup. Seniors, two-thirds are just not getting there, okay? More than 10-year residents, which are correlated to being older citizens, they're also not getting there. All right, you told me what you want. You want undocumented immigrants to serve on this border commission. Those older voters are not there. And as I remind her, they are the largest, one of the largest voting blocks in an odd year election. Less than 10 years, a plurality just undersay I would approve it. But look at the 18 to 44. You now have a majority saying, yep, I now know what you're talking about, and I would support this. 18 to 44 is about 33% of the vote. Democrats, which are 50% of turnout, you're getting a bare majority of 51. Two-thirds opposing. Unaffiliates are coming in at about 35, 36. Strong majority of 57% said, I can't get there, sorry. So all this being said, in our professional opinion of doing ballot measure surveys for 15 years in Colorado, and 30 years being a researcher and measuring these kinds of things, this is a little bit difficult to get there. But that's not where the story ends, okay? And then for your own interest in the areas where you may live or have an interest, we wanted to include this. Where does it fall in my neighborhood or certain sections of the city? That data is there. But then the open ended, okay? You always have to have the qual, why, what? Why do 39% of respondents, why would they vote yes and approve the ballot measures? You can really understand the sentiment behind where this is coming from. And here's the themes that come through. Diversity on our boards is important. It would bring needed new perspectives. That's the will there, remember, 39%. However, many still want the residency in Lafayette as a requirement. The open end is, a lot of them are very concerned, and they feel that, is this going to have a loophole where somebody is not a resident and doesn't live here regardless of the voter requirement? That does come through even among the supporters, okay? So that's kind of a gray area that could be clarified. This is just a sampling of some of those open end verbatims. I encourage everybody to read every single one, and that's your homework, to really understand where your folks are coming from. Because this is still kind of murky, okay? It's still kind of murky. I'm not saying, oh, this is crystal clear. This is, this is still really challenging, even though we did the best we could to educate and inform and bring forth what this is really all about. Opposition, I don't see a need to change the requirements. A concern that there will be people serving on these border commissions that do not live in the community and would have an influence over city decisions and outcomes. And again, I would just, you know, iterate. I think one of the telling comments is the final one at the bottom there. Although diversity is critical to a board, citizenship to vote is more important to me, I think. So again, that's where we are. That is what we measured. And I'm, I will stop there, and I'm happy to answer questions.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for taking the time to meet with us on a few occasions and to get this survey out to the community. We'll open it up to council for questions. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate all of this work. I think you've turned over a rock, and I was wondering what was going on under there. And I see a lot of confusion. So I appreciate the efforts that you took to create this, to dig in these data, to dig out these data. I love numbers. And it really does give me a sense of where the status we're at right now, and the confusion with citizenship and being registered to vote and serving on a city commission. I, I'm not super happy that planning commission was included in there, because I, I'm afraid that that adds even more questions to people's minds now. And I really look forward to letting what has, this survey has created in people's minds bubble up in a city conversation, because I think, you know, there's, there's no way to, I don't think there's any way to move on this in a way that people understand it. We've got some backpedal, not backpedaling, we've got some, we've got more work to do on the backend of this to understand, where did that connection ever show up? That somehow people want to be on a city board when they don't live here, or that.
And I would just chair, you're not the first city council on project where we have measured something along this, and this just begged for community discussion in an educated manner to arrive at perhaps a different, you know, a decision down the road. So I just want to say that. Don't feel like, you know, and this one's, it's complicated, so, thank you.
Councilor Walton?
Oh, sorry, were you done?
Yes, I was.
Thank you. I was wondering, what range would you, on ballot measures and these types of surveys, want to be seeing in order to move a ballot measure forward?
Well, there's a couple of things, Councilor, that I would take into account. First and foremost, turnout's likely to be roughly 10,000 in an odd year election. Efforts to get this done, you have a smaller number of voters that are likely to vote to educate and inform to the campaign, perhaps. You don't have as many people to touch. Next year, you're almost going to double your turnout up to 19,000, okay? Just to kind of put things into perspective. I know many of you perhaps have seen, oh, a ballot measure must be at 61%, knowing that it's going to survive, otherwise to stay above 50, either because they're going to vote against something because of really bad ballot language, and they don't understand it, therefore they're always going to default no, because they don't want to vote for something that they don't understand. But on this one, I would put it at 55, 58, to justify support levels, perhaps to give this a go. I don't, I'm, you know, we've been doing this a long time. Certain sorts of ballot measures, whether, depending on what they're asking for, or for funding and tax increases, I do prefer to see that there. This isn't in that category, though. So I do believe a majority of 55 to 58 has got a good chance of getting there.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from council? Okay, I'm not hearing any questions from council, so thank you so much, David, for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, good to see you all again. Thank you.
So, under this item, you know, we can quickly open it up to a discussion unless staff wants to jump in. But would you like to?
Sure, I was just going to say, if council does wish to move forward and do a vote tonight, we have the ordinance prepared and ready, or you also have an option to discuss and table it for a future conversation.
You went pulling that up, a recommendation.
The ordinance information?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can walk through the ordinance briefly, so you can see what's in it.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah. So the ordinance before you was prepared based on these survey results. And it would essentially, it would allow council, and it would refer a question to the voters to amend two sections of the Lafayette Charter. First is section 4.17 specifically related to the youth advisory board, and the second is section 5.1 that generally speaks to the requirements to serve on a board and commission. And approval of the ordinance would also set the ballot title as qualifications of appointed board and commission members. As I mentioned, the ordinance language is based and informed by the results you just were given. And you'll recall there were the multiple versions of the ballot question included in the survey. And the survey is based on the simplest version of that language that would just remove the requirement to serve on a board and commission, no exceptions for planning commission, or certain number, number of members on a board or commission. The actual language of the ordinance and the red line is in your packet. But as a summary of the revisions here, it would, as I mentioned, revise section 4.17 to remove the requirement that any member serving on the youth advisory board register to vote upon turning 18. The charter currently requires that anyone serving on that board, once they turn 18, to register to vote within 90 days. So this would remove that requirement and then add some minor clarifying language that they would be able to complete their term once they do turn 18. And secondly, it would amend section 5.1 eligibility for office and employment within the city to simply remove the requirement that anyone serving on a border commission be a qualified and registered elector, and instead only require that they be a resident of Lafayette. Should council move forward with this ordinance on first reading tonight? It would come before you again on September 5th for second reading to comply with the Boulder County clerk and recorder deadline for certifying the ballot content. It would then go on the November 7th ballot. And depending on the outcome, if supported by voters, we would come before you with some minor code amendments to do some cleanup based on the changes for the establishing ordinances. So the language is here on the screen. Happy with questions.
All right, yeah, thank you so much. So I think, you know, there's a, there's a few options in front of us. We can, you know, one option is to take a look at the results of the survey from years past, see like, you know, we've put this out many times, it doesn't look like it's going to pass, so let's move on. Another option is to look into potentially pushing this out next year on a non, during a presidential election when you have different demographics of voters. Maybe the results will be different then. Third option is to put something on the ballot this year, you know, because, you know, we want to see how the residents feel. Or, you know, fourth option is whatever creative thing we can come up with up here. So we can open it up to, we usually do. So I can open it up to either, either questions for staff on this, or thoughts on some of those options. Councilor Barnes?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, we're ready? So an ordinance changing, changing it to read that you do not, could we go back to it? I'm sorry. Qualified register replaces requirement to be a resident for office and employment in the city? the city?
Yeah, it's all in one section. This language would just be for the board and commission section. So, the eligibility for serving on city council, for example, is in that five-one, so that's where the title comes from.
So, what part, I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't, I didn't say that.
Yeah.
Didn't read it. Sorry. So, what part of five-one is it? Five-one? It's just one of the?
I don't know that it has a subsection, but here's the.
It's on page one eighty of the packet.
There's no subsection either.
Yeah, I don't think there's a subsection.
Paragraphs.
Here's the, here's the paragraph on the screen if that's helpful.
It's the fourth paragraph, yeah.
Wow. I was just curious because I feel like that's problematic right from the beginning if that's how it shows up on a ballot to say like, under five-one, and people look up five-one and it says eligibility for office and employment in the city. It's, and I'm not saying this has anything to do with, that, I think, is something I'd like to discuss. If we bring this back next year, like, putting that on the ballot, I think, would be, yes.
It might help to know that the ballot question itself is very specific to appointed members of boards and commissions. So, it's, it wouldn't, so what voters can see on the ballot, and this is in your ordinance on page one eighty-one of the packet. So, they would just see shell sections four seventeen and five-point-one of the Lafayette Home Rule Charter be amended to remove the requirement that appointed members of the city's boards and commissions. So, very specific, must be registered electors of the city of Lafayette. So, that would be what would appear. So, I don't think there would be any confusion. In fact, we have a legal obligation not to be confusing with our ballot titles. And so, we've been careful to draft the ballot title to be clear about what, what the city would be asking the voters to change in the charter. So, hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mayor, please.
Just a quick question. When did we run the prior ballot questions? Somebody just have off the top of their head the years?
Two thousand six, two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Other questions or thoughts on how to move forward from here? Council breaks?
I think it behooves us to try and run this next year, not this year. We've got a lot of education and work to do on this. I'm also just kind of baffled. They, we said remove the requirement to be a registered voter. We didn't say allow non-citizens or undocumented, not that I care, like, it's none of my business with their, so why was that so prevalent in this? Because I know plenty of people that aren't registered to vote that are citizens, and they just choose not to be involved in that process. And plenty of other government entities, I mean, you can, you can sign up on the military and not be registered to vote. Our government allows people to have guns on, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know. There's a lot of work and information and clarity in the next year. It's not ready. There's no, nobody, nobody understood. If you read the, I read so many of those comments, nobody understood anything about it. They were all worried they, that people weren't going to be living in the city and being involved in our, our boards and commissions. And we've got to reiterate that clearly and make information more digestible, I guess. I don't, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah. No, but I understand what you're saying, so you're hoping to pursue this again in a later year when we're maybe better prepared or the public is better informed.
Yeah.
Councilor Walton?
I've been involved many times when this ballot has, this, this similar initiative has been on the ballot, and each time we think we've improved it and gotten it right. And we have, you know, data from ballot, actual ballot results. And between that and, and the, you know, the data from the survey tonight, I think that there's definitely the opportunity to have a community conversation. I support this and its intention. I think I really would love to have the opportunity to have more diversity, but I did read through a lot of those comments, and it's just not ready for this year. I agree with you, hearing that there could be an opportunity for, you know, improved results in an even election, presidential ballot year. That's a positive thing to hear. But I think that this is going to really require a community conversation. And, you know, if, if the council and the city and the boards and commissions are really behind this, it's going to, it's going to take a community effort to have the conversation and to do the education over the next year so that you, so I say "you" because I will, I will not be on council at that point. I'm starting to like have those thoughts and, and that, those kinds of terms. So, if y'all want to do it, I will vote yes in support of it, but it's just a matter of time and priorities and, and interest. You know, I think that we do a good job and we continue to make, I hope, I hope it continues to improve, you know, accessibility to our council meetings and to all of the boards and commissions. So, there absolutely, I think I saw in some of the comments, there are always opportunities for people to get involved, but it's a much different commitment and that I think the council is interested in having that diversity and people who are committed to, to serving on those boards, so. So, I'd like to see it someday, but I don't think it's ready for this year, unfortunately.
Okay. How do others feel? Councilor Barnes?
Oh, I was just going to say that I, I don't know if everyone here supports it. The reason I supported it is because fundamentally, I do not understand why it is so challenging to connect being registered to vote with doing a good job on a board and commission. And I think part of the problem I see about with the boards and commissions that I'm a liaison with is that it's not perfectly clear to some of them in some cases how they are an advisor to the city council and where they rest and what they have the capacity to do. So, I, I think that's one of the other things that we need to help people understand is what are you doing on a board and commission? And then I think the, the need to have people register to vote to pick or to comment and to work with their, their neighbors on a board and commission, I think it would be easier to understand why I'm in favor of it. And again, I'm not sure, wait for what else. It's like, I think there's a fundamental question that is baffling me as to why there's such a big disconnect. I just wanted to say that I think there's a fundamental problem we have to find out about with people's connecting the two, and I think a lot of that has to do with not understanding what.
So, you would be interested in waiting or potentially pursuing next years or, or later?
Or later, yeah. We might have some learning two years, five years, ten years.
Councilor Sampson?
Yeah, my hypothesis with why this had failed in the last elections was the fact that we didn't have the information out there, that people didn't understand specifically what was going on, what we were asking, and we, the city as a whole, was asking, and why. But this survey came back, and this is why I like it, because surveys actually are an education method as well. You're talking to people, you're providing them the information. This definitely came back as, yeah, no, we're not, we're definitely not interested in this. But what was intriguing to me is one of the comments, and I'm going to paraphrase, said, "If you're interested in diversity of thought and perspective, there are several ways to gain that diversity, and it doesn't have to be this way." And this was the person saying, "This is why I voted no." And if I recall right, this was somebody who had people who were not, were not registered to vote in their family. So, I would go to option four of, "We can continue down this path," and I don't know where I heard this sometime today, "and we can continue to hit our head against the wall, or we can open it up and start getting creative about how else can we get diversity of thought and diversity of perspective?" And it could be as simple as talking to the people that, you know, those that are on boards and commissions could be talking to others just to gain their ideas and thoughts and bringing them to the board or other ideas. So, I know I confused you, Mayor, because you're looking at me with crazy eyes.
Uh, no, 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 I.
I'm not interested in moving forward, but I just wanted to pull something out that I came from the comments that I thought was, wow, that's a really neat perspective to hear. It's a really interesting way to say, let's, let's not always do everything in a black and white way. Let's, let's open it up and say, "How else do we go at our ultimate goal?"
Got it. Thank you. Councilor Walton?
I wanted to spend it both, Councilor Barnes and Councilor Sampson. I'll start with the comment that you made. I, you know, I have often expressed the interest in having a broader dialogue about the council priority around diversity, equity and inclusion. We did a sticker dot exercise, we had some words on the board, and then we never had a conversation, and staff is doing stuff. It seems very tactical without a real strategy. And I think that the points that you're bringing up are ripe for that strategy, and that's really intriguing. I think I did see that comment as well, and it struck me now that you reminded me of it. In relation to Councilor Barnes and the, and the comments that you're bringing up, with my experience talking about into senior advisory board and sort of what's their role, what's, what does council need, what do they want to do, they've gone through, and as you all know, I need to follow up because I was, they have revised their, their articles, and it would come in the form of an ordinance to council. Now, I think it's sort of council's job to say like, "And, okay, let's have a conversation. What would we want from an agent, from a senior advisory board? Do they match?"
Right.
And, and honestly, that kind of conversation perhaps could be, maybe we could do it this fall into, you know, the beginning of the winter and, and get, use that perhaps or consider it as a model to then have, have some quick hits on the whole list of boards and commissions and that, see how, see how this conversation, you know, fits into that. So, kind of some broader ideas are kind of coming out of this discussion. I think we are kind of are starting to get consensus, it sounds like, on the action that's on the agenda, but definitely something to maybe start to come, come to in some other ways that are kind of intriguing.
Council breaks?
Well, I've actually been thinking about boards and commissions and noticing this year that many feel they do not have direction, or what are they supposed to be doing, or just grasping at things, or feeling like they're working on something, and then it just never, you know, gets in front of us, and yet the city's doing, working on the exact same thing in parallel, you know? And so, I've been kind of got a lot of ideas and whatnot, but I believe we are actually going to be discussing boards and commissions in one of our workshops coming up, September, maybe? Thirteen days? I'd like to have a part of the, I'm counting, I'm really excited around budget. Yeah, I want to, you know, not only is the budget, a budget discussion, but it's a work planning discussion. And so, you know, a lot of the communities around us have been going through very similar things that we've been going through with their boards and commissions. And so, we have some templates of, instead of piecemealing these conversations, do we want next year to have had this holistic look at it all, kind of with a similar lens, and then bring that forward more as a work plan? Again, not necessarily monetarily, but resources-wise, so, yes, it is on the radar, and I think it's a valuable conversation to have.
Yeah, it's a bigger conversation. So, I think what you're hearing is that, you know, overall, the council, and I'll, I'll speak for myself, I guess, but, but in general, you know, and I feel that like, this is something I'm supportive of, this is something that I would, I would like to see pass, I wish it would. The results of the survey didn't, you know, share that. And so, you know, it's definitely, I think it's best that we wait and take no action on this item tonight. And, you know, those of us that are interested in seeing something like this pass, you know, I believe that it's more strategic to wait for next year for a presidential or wait for more information or wait for more education if we really want to do see it pass. But I think overall, I think council is not interested in push, putting anything on the ballot this year. So, I just wanted to make sure staff was aware of that, and I think, oh, go ahead, Councilor Barnes.
I was just, Mayor, do we need to vote on it?
If we take no action, we don't need to take a vote.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would be, that's it. So, I think, you know, thank you so much to staff and Timo John for putting this together and for sticking with us for, for some months now. So, thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
No, we appreciate it. It was a fun challenge, if you will. No, I just hope it helps you make some decisions and know where things stand. That's what it's really all about. And you felt that you really heard the voice of your community.
Yep. Thank you.
So, thank you for the opportunity. And we was happy to do another project.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time. All right. All right. So, we're going to move forward in our agenda under regular, I'm sorry. Yes. Under.
I just wanted to make sure it needs to.
Oh, she texted me, so we're good. All right. So, under public hearings or under regular business, we have item G, which is a public hearing. This is for first reading of ordinance fifteen series twenty-twenty-three on short-term rentals. Notice in the Daily Camera on July sixth, sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three. This is a public hearing, and so, we do have a process we will be following for this that I can go over, but I believe it's, you're probably going to do it anyways. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Thank you for your time. Phil Kleisler with the City's Planning and Building Department. Staff is pleased to be presenting ordinance number fifteen series twenty-twenty-three regarding short-term rentals for council's consideration at first reading. This has been a collaborative process with multiple departments, and staff from both planning and building and finance are here on hand tonight to answer any questions council members may have. The proposed agenda for this item includes a staff presentation. So, we'll, we'd like to provide some background information and then just cover the different sections of the ordinance. We'll then move on to a public hearing, and the public hearings required to amend any part of Chapter twenty-six, which is our development and zoning code. Then we'll move on to council questions and discussion and a council motion. So, moving into the background, you may recall that last year, we had a couple of conversations. So, we visited with planning commission and council twice. The first one was about scoping, and so, we talked about the project objectives, and we landed on three objectives, and those included developing regulations that would explore allowing short-term rentals in Lafayette, but focusing on ways to, to limit impacts to the city's housing supply and to neighboring properties. This is really where the engagement effort over the past year focused on. And then if council does opt to formally allow short-term rentals in Lafayette, the other objective, second objective, is to ensure that each one of them are licensed and paying applicable taxes and fees. And then third is to create a multi-departmental approach for identifying, tracking, administering the new regulations. So, why now? The city's regulations have not been updated to be responsive to short-term rentals since they've kind of became a thing over the last several years. And as a result, the ones that exist today are not currently allowed through zoning. They're pretty challenging to track, and so, enforcement can be really time-consuming. And we were hearing concerns from both neighbors and potential and current short-term rental operators. Neighbors, a lot of concern around develop disturbances to the neighborhood as a result of the operation of the, of the rentals and to the impacts on available housing in the city. And then operators kind of describe that the short-term rental does provide some supplemental income that allows them to better afford to relive and reside here in Lafayette. So, a short-term rental really introduced that smaller lodging use into what has traditionally just been a residential neighborhood. And on the outside, they're indistinguishable, but in operations, there, there's quite a number of differences. Long-term rentals are generally somebody's primary residence throughout the year. Short-term rentals cater to individuals or families visiting or on vacation typically for thirty days or less. As a result, long-term rentals occupied throughout the year, and short-term rentals generally in Lafayette are dated. in Lafayette, our data suggests, are occupied roughly three months out of the year.
Not three consecutive?
Not three consecutive months. From what we're hearing, it's highest in the summer and lowest in the winter. The city's zoning regulations do permit two types of lodging uses currently. Those include the motel, hotel, and resort use and the bed and breakfast use. These are traditional lodging uses that are generally found in commercial areas throughout the city. However, as you know, short-term rentals were really a different model of lodging that are found in residential neighborhoods where these lodging uses are not allowed. And so currently, they're, they're not permitted in Lafayette. With the guidance of council, we've, we've had a couple of engagement windows. We launched a Lafayette listens page where we included a questionnaire last year. This is also, one thing I didn't note, but council initiated discussion in, discussion in 2019. It was tabled due to COVID, and so we picked it back up last year. And so we were able to launch a questionnaire last year and have some similar questions and compare the two, and there were some interesting findings with that. We heard a lot of great comments online. We had some open houses, virtual meetings and in-person meetings. And overall, what we heard is that there is interest in entering the short-term rental market to meet the, the demand, the assumed demand. And so we did ask residents whether they would consider renting their home as a short-term rental, both in the 2019 and the 2022 questionnaire, and both of those were exactly 39%, which was interesting. And so we assume that there's probably some interest out there. Many residents described short-term rentals as serving a demand, particularly among families that can't necessarily be filled with a single hotel in Lafayette. However, we're finding that concerns still are prevalent, so over half of the respondents in our questionnaire last year, 52%, were not comfortable having a short-term rental on their block, and some of the reasons for that was neighborhood impacts like noise and parking and decreases in the available housing stock in Lafayette and within their neighborhood. And so given that and given all of the other conversations we've had, we've, we've come to an understanding that there's likely no clear consensus on this item in the community. Operators generally describe their rentals as providing, providing needing, needed income and that their guests are respectful and responsible, generally visiting family, visiting the hospital, and that the online platforms do a lot to try to limit parties, like no-party rule at Airbnb. However, the neighbors and some other individuals that we had spoken with still do have concerns, particularly around availability of housing around investors or investment groups or firms purchasing multiple properties and flipping them to a short-term rental, and then the neighborhood impacts around parking and so on. So last year with council, we, we talked about some strategies that we wanted to pursue as part of the engagement process. We went into that engagement, we came back to council, and council ultimately took a couple off the table, and those included limiting the number of licenses or the license cap and some noise monitoring devices. The other strategies council was interested in pursuing, we tried to incorporate those and implement those in the proposed ordinance. And so the proposal before you tonight for your consideration, really at a high level, does two things. It allows short-term rentals as an accessory use to residential uses, and it places what we believe to be reasonable restrictions focused on housing availability and neighborhood impacts. And so with that said, we'd like to just run through really quickly the different sections of the ordinance just to highlight what's being proposed. So section one, permitted uses, would allow short-term rentals as an accessory use to residential dwellings in, in zone districts that allow residential uses. That map is just a map showing the geography of those, those districts, and those are also included in your packet in that briefing book that was attached to the memo. Section two includes a footnote referencing related land use and licensing regulations, and section three includes definitions. So there is, we, we allow motel, hotel, and resort uses, but we don't have a definition, so that's really just a cleanup item. We figured we, we could do that as part of this process. The short-term rental definition is to the right on this screen. We're not going to read it, but the key point here is that it's for less than 30 days. The city doesn't have a licensing process or really regulate just the pure rental of a dwelling unit for more than that period of time. And then primary residence, we're going to get into in just a moment. Section four are land use requirements, and so I'm just going to hit the, the high ones here. So accessory use, we wanted to clearly state upfront that this is, short-term rentals are allowed as an accessory use or subordinate or secondary to a residential use, that a license is required, and so we'll get into the details of what that license entails in just a moment. Short-term rentals would be allowed one non-illuminated sign, up to one and a half square feet, and we distinguish, have a provision around primary and accessory dwellings, and so on properties that have an accessory dwelling unit, which is the next topic in this evening, licensees could rent out their accessory dwelling unit or their short-term rental while staying in their short-term rental or vice versa. But they would not be able to reside permanently in their accessory dwelling unit. The intent of that regulation is to prevent somebody from residing in the accessory dwelling unit, which is supposed to be secondary, and then using the main home essentially as a full-time hotel. And so that's what we're trying to avoid in that regulation. There would be nothing prohibiting the licensee from moving into the ADU as they're renting the, the, the main home as a short-term rental. We just wanted to make sure that we're thinking through some of those unintended consequences, and so that, that's the intent behind that provision. The primary residence is probably what we've heard most through the process, and that's probably what is in, what council has received in public comments the most. That definition is shown here. This would require that the short-term rental be the person's primary residence. We had a lot of discussion as staff as to how to word this, what this definition, how specific we should be. We ultimately landed on this broader definition because in looking at some other cities that have some more specific ones, and we included examples in the memo, and we can, and we can note that later, we had concerns about just our ability to enforce it with current staffing, and we're going to touch a bit more on, on that later, but that, that is something that we're hearing a lot about. Section four, land use, land use requirements, we're just continuing. So as part of the licensing process, the app, the licensee would need to apply for and receive a life safety check from the city's building division. This is kind of the punch list of things, fairly basic, that would be examined through that process. There's a maximum number of guests of, proposed of two people per bedroom plus two, and our data suggests that short-term rentals in, on average, have two bedrooms in Lafayette. We wanted to address parking by requiring that guest parking be located on the property of the short-term rental. We also acknowledge that there might be situations where that property does not have parking on site, and so in that case, the regulations would allow for two cars to park off, off-site on the street. One last point around land use code requirements is the, the provision around the simultaneous rental. So short-term rentals would not be able to include the simultaneous rental of more that, to one, more than one party under separate contracts. And so in this case, we were just talking about accessory dwelling units as well, they could include a listing that says we're renting out both the primary home and the ADU, but not to two separate parties. So that's what we're trying to avoid. In a home, that would, that would be more like a bed and breakfast establishment where you're renting out to multiple parties, and so we're trying to differentiate the smaller scale use in these residential areas with this ordinance. So moving on to the licensing requirements, there is some, there are some basic definitions up front. One of them is a local responsible party, and so this would require somebody to be on file with the city, being available 24/7 within 30 miles, and able to make decisions. So if something, an issue were to come up, they would be able to kind of be on scene and take care of it. The application process is outlined in, in the ordinance, and it's a fairly standard process. The license would be valid for two years, and either a homeowner to the property or a renter renting that property could apply for a short-term rental license. Obviously, the renter would need the owner's permission. And then required acts, we've touched on a number of those, but the ones we haven't touched on include advertising. So I mentioned earlier that tracking these is, can be really challenging. So this ordinance would require that the license, the city license number be posted on any advertisements, and so that would also include, include online advertisements. And then, and then we are recommending a delayed start of January 1, 2024. The purpose of this delayed start is to allow for the city's software vendor to kind of set up the licensing system. The planning commission also has a recommendation around the go-live date that we'll get into in just a moment as well. So we released the draft regulations a few weeks ago now, and we've received some comments that council has in your packet. Some of the concerns that we've heard since releasing the regulations are still around neighborhood impacts, particularly we're seeing some other concerns around higher concentrations in certain areas of the city, like Old Town, that was in some of the comments that you received, and still notes around investors purchasing multiple homes. Again, interest in thinking about those limits geographically and having a more specific primary residence requirement. We also did receive a letter and met with, at their request, the hosting platform, Airbnb. In general, the, they appreciated the, the effort and the process that the city's going through to set up licensing and a process for these to become potentially legally operating short-term rentals in the city. However, they oppose our primary residence requirement and suggest not applying any of those regulations around primary residence outside of residential areas in commercial zone districts. Just want to make one note on that, though, is that, as, as we mentioned earlier, we have those other, like, bed and breakfast uses that are allowed in those commercial districts, and those uses are not, don't need to comply with any of these primary residence requirements. And so we think actually our other requirements that are already on the books may satisfy that, that comment, if that makes sense. So the planning commission held a public hearing on July 26. The commission voted to recommend approval of the ordinance, but they have two additional recommendations. The first is that council consider extending the effective date of the ordinance by six months after the date of passage, and the second is that council specifically consider the definition of a primary residence in section three of the ordinance and the related provisions concerning compliance and enforcement. So around the effective date, so as I mentioned, our software vendor needed a little time to set everything up, and so if council were to approve the ordinance, our finance staff thinks that January 1 is a reasonable date. During the planning commission hearing, there was public comment from a homeowners' association that said, that requested a longer timeline so they can amend their covenants to address short-term rentals, and so the planning commission obviously agreed with that, made their recommendation, and staff also concurs with, with pushing it out. That would put it to March 1 of 2024. The second recommendation around primary residence was discussed at length at the planning commission meeting, but there wasn't necessarily a broad consensus to form the formal recommendation, so that's why they wanted to flag it for council's consideration this evening. We mentioned earlier that our, we really kind of noodled on this definition, landed on a broader definition. Some cities in the area do have a more specific definition, and I think we included those in the memo. So Broomfield requires that the entire property can't be advertised for more than 20 days in a month. Thornton, and Thornton licensees must reside in a home at least 50% of the year. And we've actually reached out to those cities, and we were able to connect with one of them prior to this meeting. As context, they have roughly three times the enforcement staff as we do, and it's still a challenge, and it takes a lot of time to investigate and to enforce that. And so staff, where we're landing is that we're recommending really that implement and monitor approach where we track over time how the, how the regulations are performing and, and make recommendations at a, at a later date about any tweaks that need to happen. One last note on this is that we did bring forward a second primary residence strategy to council and planning commission last year, you may recall. So what we heard through the engagement process was that some folks own a home in Lafayette and then bought a second home, perhaps down the street, and used that as a short-term rental. And so we brought a option to council and planning commission last year that said, well, your primary residence plus one, basically, to try to address and account for that. That was not something at the time that council was interested in pursuing, and so we did not implement that through the ordinance. The next steps for this item, any edits or amendments to this ordinance would be made and presented on second reading on September 5. And with that said, the recommended motion language is here, and just a quick note, we'll also have the planning commission recommendations here. This is a little bit different from the one that's in your packet, just based on some conversations that we've had with Mary Lynn, but if you wanted to implement the planning commission's delayed start of six months, that could be the motion language that you could consider of March 1, 2024. So with that said, thank you very much for your time this evening. Per the recommended agenda, we would break for a public hearing.
That's correct. Real quick, before we get into that portion, I'm not seeing in the packet the planning commission recommended language. I see January 1 twice, but maybe I need to refresh.
So in the ordinance section, I'm sorry. Section 10 of the proposed ordinance has January 10 as its, as the recommended date, though that would be amended to include-
Right, I'm, what I'm trying to say is I'm not, that specific slide I'm not seeing in the pack.
Oh, okay.
I have it.
Mine, mine doesn't. Okay, I'll figure it out. No worries. Okay, I will get to that later. All right, so thank you so much, staff, for putting that presentation together. This is a public hearing, so the next portion of this will be public comment. If you wish to speak on this topic, once again, just like earlier, please fill out a yellow form and bring it to our clerk here to get your five minutes. So we will begin with Dave Dvorak.
Good evening, councilors and city administrators and staff. Thank you for the many good things you've already done for the city of Lafayette, making it a much better place to live, because I'm Dave Dvorak, and I live at 2340 Rimrock Circle in Lafayette, and I'm reaping those very benefits that you have so justly passed. Now, I have a little conundrum here, and a little conundrum, because I do have comments on short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units, and, but I, I think I have a, maybe an even more important related topic, and it's so, I think, extremely timely, because I heard the mayor say that they have extra funds available this year, or that's what I thought he said, and that there will be budget hearings coming up, and I wish to say a few comments, which is a related topic, on the hiring of a full-time director of housing for the city of Lafayette. I'm recommending that be considered in the future for a number of reasons, but at least three that I'll tell you about. You know, the city of Lafayette is obviously in the big league housing space now. Once the groundbreaking occurred for Willoughby Corner, we no longer, we being city of Lafayette or small-town operators for affordable housing units. City of Lafayette has landed the largest, to date, affordable housing project in the state, and this is not, you know, I was at the groundbreaking, and it was just tremendous. Everybody did such a great job, and now what I want to mention is, who's going to be the city person that has to monitor Boulder County Housing Authority's progress and management and all those related things? Who, who will be that person, the city designee, to manage this complex, very long-term investment? Also, number two, state-level affordable housing legislation provides resource to municipalities being, it passed every year. Someone really should be on staff to interpret legislation, to apply, to monitor, to implement, conduct all the follow-up you would need for all the housing that would be resulted in the city of Lafayette. Who might that person be? Number three, the State Department of Local Affairs, commonly called DOLOP, is constantly promulgating new house, housing rules, regulations for affordable housing, including providing much-needed resources for municipalities again. Who should the city designate be to follow these rules, these regulations, going to all these meetings, making the necessary contact? And then- And then how can we start addressing or stopping this phrase that I've heard several different places in the city? Oh, we don't have enough personnel to do that. Oh, you know, we can't do it that quickly. Oh, did I hear somebody say we don't have the money? I heard that earlier today. Well, there was no funds. Well, of course, you don't have the money right now because you didn't budget that. So with the budget process just getting underway, I would urge you to consider budgeting a position, starting for next fiscal year, for a housing director. You just look back, and I've been here for two years, and I know approximately how many new positions have been added to numerous departments in the city, and that's great. So it can be done. There's a process, we know what the process is, so I'm encouraging you to take a look at that. So on to short-term rentals. SDRs, as we know them as well, apparently in the language I've been reading and what's been presented here, I feel do address the two major concerns. One is how do you keep a neighborhood as a community for neighbors? And two, how do you keep short-term rentals from impacting the availability of affordable housing again? I think this addresses that, and and so I'm encouraged by that, but I do want to note, I don't really think there's enough materials and reflection and actual guidance on compliance, enforcement, and the penalties. That's a big deal. You know, who might that person be if there's a housing director? Well, I don't know that. Now, do you want me to speak to ADUs, too, at this time?
That'd be at the next hearing.
The next time?
The next hearing, which is.
Next time? So for now, I'll say thank you, and I'll be right back.
Thank you, Mr. Dvorak. Appreciate it. All right, next we have Sabrina Santa Clara.
Good evening. So everyone's got these like prepared things. I've got nothing prepared, but I'm sure I had an opinion, so I'm going to speak for two roles. So one is as a resident of Lafayette, as a business owner in Lafayette. I've lived here for twelve years, thirteen years, and I also run an Airbnb, right? And so the Airbnb that I run generally doesn't apply. I'm mostly doing long-term rentals for people who are here for internships, people who move here and are looking for someplace to land while they are trying to find where their permanent home is. However, I do do short-term in between, right? So my place, because I do more longer term, is mostly full. Like, right now, I've got two people in here that are interning at the new MedTech.
Medtronic.
Right. But in the in-between, I do do short-term. It's five-days-ish, because who wants to clean that much, right? So but those people are usually people here who are visiting family members who don't have space to accommodate them. I have two rooms, and so if the proposal was you can't have two separate rooms, that would preclude me from providing housing for people who are coming to visit family members in Lafayette that cannot accommodate them. I also have another hat that I roll. So I'm the president of my HOA, of the Sherwood Two HOA. It is, so I appreciate all y'all are doing. It's a lot of work, right? So in this HOA, which was built in nineteen seventy-two, is built for coal miners, right? So it's one of the few HOA complexes that people can still afford. They're still under four hundred, five hundred thousand, right? And we're trying to clean it up. When I bought in two thousand and ten, our HOA fees were eighty-six dollars, because our covenants are written so that they weren't raisable. Now they're two twenty-five, and we still have residents there who were the original owners. So our our elderly population, who are very hardly able to afford their place, so as the sort of social community therapist person, I'm helping them to figure out, how do you make this sustainable? How do you make this livable? And we're working on actually creating Airbnbs in some of these elderly people's homes. If we know that the primary use is during the summertime, that means that for the rest of the year, they're they're primarily not going to be getting income. So to limit them to one room when they have three-room places, it limits their ability to be sustainable. I don't want our elderly people to have to sell out because they can't afford to live in a house that they've lived in for fifty years. So I would urge a reconsideration of that that two-room limit, particularly for our population who are surviving on this extra little income. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for speaking. Next up, we have Vicki Euland.
Hi, Vicki Euland, three oh three West Simpson Street. First of all, I I want to say how thrilled I am that this ordinance is before you tonight. I mean, this has been a long, hard slog, and I appreciate all of the work that staff and council and planning commission has put into this. It's it's great to see it. I support the ordinance as it's written. I have two thoughts and questions, I guess, and they, I mean, my first thought is the primary residence requirement. I would like to point out that everybody who has bought a short-term rental in a property in Lafayette to be a short-term investment rental has done so illegally. I mean, they are illegal in Lafayette. So if they didn't look into that, or I feel that that issue lies with them. Now we are setting legal terms. In terms of the primary residence, I agree with what planning commission said, and the reason in terms of trying to define that a little more, and the reason why is because I have a personal story about this. There is a property in Old Town that has a three-bedroom house on the front. In the back is a one-bedroom ADU above a garage and an illegal studio apartment built on the front of the ADU. It was originally an artist's studio, but a long-term investment person bought it, put in a bathroom, apparently without a permit. And I actually have the Airbnb and Verbo listings that list the the short-term rental in the front, the short-term rental in the ADU, and it says that there is a studio apartment that's rented. It doesn't say whether it's short-term or not, but obviously, you can't have three residences on a single Old Town lot without a PUD, which I doubt that they have. So my point behind this is neighbors complain. Neighbors complained to city staff, and nothing happened. In fact, this property was sold a year ago with that illegal residence on there. So my concern is, and I don't think that city staff was just like, oh, we're not going to do anything. I mean, and this was not you guys, it was like three or four years ago, but was there not enough staff to do it? Speaking back to what the gentleman said before, how is this going to be enforced? If we can't even enforce an illegal residence for rent on a Lafayette property, how are we going to enforce that this is a primary residence and, you know, it's it's being rented by the primary owner and all of that? So I do agree, I'd like to hear from staff what the enforcement plans are, what the penalties are, I thought that was a really good point, and if we need more staff to do this right, because I think it's a really good idea to have the license number on the advertisements, but who's going to go through the advertisements and check to see if there's a license number? Who's going to educate residents that they have to get a license and how to get a license and all of that? So for that reason, I do support the the delay so that that can be worked out, but I think that the March deadline is really good, because this is, we've waited so long for this. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, next we have Ron Spalding.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Again, Ron Spalding, one three two six, Elrada Way, Lafayette, Colorado. In this ordinance, I personally am opposed to the short-term rental ordinance, and also want to speak in behalf of the Coal Creek Village Community. The Coal Creek Village Community is a planned unit development, four hundred-plus homes right off South Water Road. It's a mix of single-family homes, townhomes, attached homes, and patio homes. There are three boards in this community. We have a master association board, we have an attached board, and we have a north patio villa home board. I've lived there twelve years. I've served on two of the boards on various committees. I just stopped about a year ago, so eleven years I've been with that community, a couple thousand people. I'm speaking for four hundred homeowners, plus myself, and those who live in there. Being on the board, one of the main concerns of the community are rentals, long-term rentals, forget the short-term rentals. And being on the board and being, some of the issues put up here, and I don't know about the rest of Lafayette, just some of the housing, so I'm speaking about HOAs and our HOA. You know, I can say the majority of the residences oppose it, except the investors have bought in. Investors bought in, and I think for the most part, it's hard to identify, but I think the most part, they're long-term rentals. And as pointed out, there's some issues there with it rented, it's the upkeep of the residence itself, of the residence itself by the rental people, parking issues, noise issues, HOA violations, or management company when the violations has to go to, doesn't go to the renter, goes to the owner. Well, they're somewhere else. And so then we have a mess on our hands on that. And the short-term rentals, people would go crazy for the same issues and more. I mean, the housing there, you drive through, you know, I'm not trying to be any elitist, you know, it's decent housing, it's nice housing and all, and they don't want to say it because of those issues. If it passes, I agree with Vicki and others, how do you, one, identification of someone to come in and has it to apply? They're not going to do it. We, the board, we've been trying to identify the investors there so we can get to them. We have a hard, very difficult time finding out the renters, and the people who live there, you know, they don't respond to the to the complaints. So, one, the people that have it now, and everyone gets short-term, that come in there, they're not going to do it unless they're very good Christians. Secondly, if they do, the enforcement. I mean, the HOA on the rental, we don't have any, we can do the fines and blah, 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 and all that. By the time it gets to putting them on, you know, take them to court, court, it takes months, it's a mess. So if this goes through, I don't know, as an HOA, I don't know what we're going to be able to do, but I know the way it's written, and even if it's written with the enforcement and all that, they don't want it. So that's just some food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Jonathan Watt.
Hi. First city council meeting here, so thank you all for the opportunity to to say something. I just actually got notified about this issue recently, and actually checked in with several people I know, business owners, residents, if they knew anything about the short-term rental regulations and things that are coming up, and they were like, no, I haven't heard anything about this. You know, it's first we've heard of it. So a little bit of background on myself while I'm up here. So I am a resident of Lafayette. I've been in Boulder County for almost twenty years. I'm an entrepreneur, did my PhD work at C Boulder, have built and run several businesses in the area, and also advise some companies and do some things of that nature. Thinking about starting some new businesses in the area in the near future. But I bought a home in Lafayette a couple of years ago now that did have, it's one of the funky homes, there seems to be a number of those in this community, which is cool, gives a lot of character, actually, that has, you know, it's got actually effectively three two-bedroom houses on it. Pretty interesting little property, and it's it's right downtown, and I lived in one of them, remodeled them, you know, just cosmetic things, interior, fixing them up, and have been doing some short-term rentals, although I'll say, you know, given that they're all, you know, small houses, they effectively, a lot of folks come, and I think somebody else spoke about, they had to do a lot of long-term rentals. So a lot of people that that come to this area are looking to buy houses, they're here for work, lots of reasons, here visiting family, and they're looking for, you know, month-to-month rentals, you know, anywhere from one up to even six, seven, eight, nine months sometimes. Actually, the same case, I also own a farm out in East Boulder County that I lived on before I bought this property, and same kind of thing, I have an apartment there where people do do monthly rentals, looking to, you know, check out the community. Anyways, I think I want to commend you guys on what, you know, I've done as much reading as I can over the last few days since I learned about this from Airbnb. You guys have done a lot of work, and it looks like crafting what seemed to be some pretty sensible regulations, I'd say, and and I know lots of folks in Boulder and in the area that have Airbnbs, some are primary residences, some they they rent out the entire house. A couple of things I just wanted to point out, you know, I think that there are no significant, you know, there's no significant number of hotel rooms or bed and breakfast here, and so a number of people just in the neighborhood, they they're very supportive of it, they seem to be, because their families come and they stay, and they have a whole house they can rent. And, you know, I think if nobody's ever done Airbnb themselves, renting out rooms in your house or even accessory dwelling unit where you live is is one way, and it works very well, but, you know, a lot of folks are looking for a place to bring their family, and they don't want a shared space. And so, you know, having, since there are no hotels here, having some number of, you know, of these houses that people can rent, effectively an entire house, whether it's two, three, four-bedroom, whatever it is, I think is a valuable thing for the community, especially if it's regulated right. There's a lot of tax dollars. I checked today, and I think you guys get about eight and a half percent of the in taxes on every on every Airbnb rental, the Airbnb pays you guys directly. So you guys are getting probably, I'm guessing, close to six-figure, you know, tax revenue, I guess, from Airbnb rentals. It would be my guess. So anyways, I think the primary residence thing could be a challenging thing to do, because I think you're going to limit some of the houses that could be fully available or requiring somebody to, you know, somebody talked about how it affects trying to rent out two rooms to two different parties, if you have an accessory dwelling unit, if you wanted to rent out the whole thing, or if you had, you know, in the summertime is when there's a lot more kind of short-term traffic. One family wants to rent out one house, one family wants to rent out the ADU. I think it does limit, you know, an owner's ability to kind of run that that Airbnb side business that they're doing. So anyways, I would encourage you guys to reconsider some level of the primary residence requirement and maybe look at capping the number of non-primary resident licenses granted, something like that, that would allow some number of houses to be here, and still get to generate the tax income. But I think if you just limit it to primary residents only, it could be somewhat restrictive. And yeah, that's that's just, I guess, my my two cents on this. I do plan to to go talk to some more folks, because I know that everybody I've talked to, as I mentioned before, was surprised, and and I think they're supportive of some of the regulations, but but I think that they were a little bit surprised at the level of of regulation, so. But I think regulation's good, you know, make sure it's safe and that the community is being respected, and you guys are getting your tax dollars.
Thank you so much, and welcome to your first time. For joining us.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm not seeing any more yellow slips for folks that would like to speak in person. I do, however, have, it looks like there's a couple callers in. So if you are calling into our meeting and wish to speak on this item for the public hearing, please press the star six button to raise your hand, and we'll unmute you so you can speak. So we'll begin with caller phone number ending in a two, five, three. Phone number ending in two, five, three. You you should be able to speak as long as you're here for the short-term rentals conversation. Go ahead. If they're unmuted, let me unmute them. And caller two-five-three, would you, there we go. We got it, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. My name is Jessica Levine, and I'm at 408 East Cleveland. And I want to share, we bought in Lafayette about five years ago to be able to build an ADU, and we do do short-term rentals. For us, it's primarily because we have a young family and our front house is quite small. And the primary people that come and visit us are family members, those other people of our neighbors. We have never had a problem with parties. We find that everybody's very respectful of our property because they want to come back to get their grandkids. We also maintain our property very well because we want to make sure that our views are protected, that our property is maintained and as we advertise. And we actually really want the license being forced because we want to follow the rules. We work really hard to keep our property up to be able to provide enough for our family. And I would actually love the licensing process to be implemented as of January because it's a more important part of our income than what we provide to the neighbors. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you for calling in. All right, I have two other numbers. If you'd like to speak on this topic, please raise your hand by pressing star six. So caller zero-eight-seven, caller eight-seven-eight, if you would speak, please raise your hand now. I'll give you a couple seconds to do that. If not, we will move forward. All right, so I'm not seeing any other callers raising their hand. So, and I'm not seeing any more in-person speakers. So with that, we will close public input for this hearing and we'll move forward. I believe we are on to council questions or comments. So we'll open it up to council for questions for staff.
Can you review the rest of the agenda for the night? Are we doing like questions and then?
So, all that's left is questions and then I'll close the public hearing and then we'll vote, deliberate vote, if we deliberate and vote.
Okay. So you want to kind of separate questions from comments and deliberation?
Yes, let's just do questions for staff. Counselor Samson.
So, short-term rental, as I read, is up to thirty days. Anything after thirty days, if somebody's renting, it's long-term rental.
Yes.
Okay. One question. What department is assigned for enforcement?
That would be our department, planning and building department. We have one code enforcement official. And I was hoping, I'm glad you mentioned that because that was brought up during public comments. And just a note on that, we have talked a bit about starting to strategize around what that looks like. What we're thinking right now is that there's going to be an effort to do more of an educational push if council were to adopt this, kind of stop in the city hall, one-stop shop, get your license, kind of. And we would hope that we would have a significant, if not complete voluntary, compliance with the ordinance. And so, however, if we're three, six months into it and we're seeing that we're only at ten percent of what we think is out there, there are companies that we've, we're starting to talk to just to, for fact-finding that you can pay and they will do the discovery and send you kind of the address and you can kind of send your letter, courtesy letter, to come and license with the city. However, there's a cost with that. And so, if we can get voluntary compliance through more educational aspects, we'll probably want to do that as a first step. With enforcement, the ordinance does include a revocation proceeding or denial proceeding for licenses, and there's an appeal process for the licensee to take that through the city administrator and to a court. And we would be relying on other aspects of, that are already in place in the municipal code to prosecute any violations of this. And so we have the framework to do it, but as was noted in public comment, it's not easy sometimes with these cases. They can be really time-intensive if the owner doesn't live here. So it gets tricky, but the tools are there, it's just the time to figure it out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Counselor Briggs.
Are we currently receiving tax revenue from Airbnb? Is that my understanding? Oh, okay.
They're voluntarily remitting taxes at this time.
Very nice of them.
Good question.
So, a follow-on to that is like, we don't, so we're getting tax revenue, but we don't know where they are? Is that what I'm?
Oh, you know where they are.
So, so no. So, and David can keep me honest, but it's our understanding, it's my understanding that they will not necessarily provide a list of all of their clients here in Lafayette to this, to a city. And we've tried to reach out to them actually at the start of this process, the actual folks that are out there doing the vacation rentals, but it's really challenging. And because we wanted to inform them about the process to invite them into the discussion. But it's done that for probably safety reasons, some part where you don't necessarily want someone knowing this house is vacant, you know, nine months out of the year. And so, it's challenging, that's where those companies can help if needed.
Other questions? Counselor Walton.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. The, okay, that particular order, really. You talked about the access, there would need to be somebody within thirty miles for access and making decisions. And I don't want, I don't really care about what that means and the details, but I think that's a really important education point that be included, that if there's some kind of paperwork, like a power of attorney, like that we make it, we really are educated. We say, this is a form you might want to consider if that's a thing. So, I like what you're saying about the education and the code enforcement and that it already is on your radar in terms of, you know, having to outsource for the software piece of it to get up and going and then also the potential for outsourcing other things. Through this process, too, I know that we have talked about coming out with something because we do want to have regulations in place. We are hearing from those who have short-term rentals that they are, they also want that most usually. That's a sentiment that we've heard through the public process since 2019. And I, but I also know, and I confirm if this is the case, and maybe you can even tick off a few things that are on your, you know, short list of, we're going to wait and see, we're going to take a look at, and, you know, are there things that you're particularly going to be looking for data and collecting data that might require revision and proposed update in the future? Are there kind of a couple of things that are high on that list? Or do you feel like we're going to nail it here?
No, I think this is, it's an evolving industry. It was a disruptive industry to the lodging space, but, and so I think regulations should, we should probably be thinking through that every year or two of what's working, what's not, and do we need to make tweaks along the way. There's other communities out there that are on that kind of similar tempo. Granted, we're not, we don't have the level of the number of Airbnbs or short-term rentals as some other of the resort communities, but yeah, it's our intent to continually reevaluate and.
Okay, that's great. Can you talk a little bit about the HOAs? I know this has come up, but you didn't really dig into too many details tonight, other than mentioning that they, that the planning commission has, is, there's an interest in giving them more time, which they're going to either do it or they're not. But isn't it correct to say that the HOA covenants supersede anything that we do in the city around short-term rentals? So, an HOA could, but they don't have to change their covenants for this, right?
They could, Mary, you can correct me, but they could have more restrictive requirements prohibiting short-term rentals, and they would have to enforce that, not the city, but that is an option for homeowners associations.
That is correct. Or they could change their covenants to expand, maybe something that's more restrictive. Which way do you think it's more likely to go, or the hearing from HOAs?
We've heard from a number of HOAs. We had some meetings with a few of them last year throughout the process. We don't have a good sense of globally how many are going to or currently do not allow short-term rentals, but there was a handful that had concerns about it, and then there were several that were actually open to the idea and supportive that we've met with last year. It probably leans more towards more restrictive, though, is my guess.
So, in that map that you shared tonight, it includes HOAs, but it doesn't, but there's not, that's not, there's not an overlay of whatever covenants they may have already in place that they would maybe choose not to change?
No.
Okay. All right. So, HOA, is it, it's true statement then, HOA covenants supersede any ordinance we pass?
They can be more restrictive, but they can't be less restrictive than us.
You were sharing an example tonight during your presentation, and I wanted to make sure it was clear. You talked about if somebody had an ADU, they could live in their ADU and rent out their primary residence or the other structure on the property for a long-term rental, but not as a short-term rental?
Yeah, so that would, the intent of that provision was to limit someone, to not allow for the ADU to become the new primary residence and then renting out the larger principal home full-time, if that makes sense.
You're trying to limit that?
Yep. So, the intent was to have, introduce these as a secondary use in residential neighborhoods, but by allowing the principal home on the property to become the full-time, a potential full-time, short-term rental, it acts more like a hotel and more like a business. And so, the right, that provision would allow the owner to either reside in the main home and rent out the ADU or vice versa, but it wouldn't allow them to live and kind of set up shop and permanently live in the accessory dwelling unit.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, maybe Director Brazel can help explain that one.
So, I think your question was, can somebody live, have a property with an ADU and a home, and live in either one of those and rent them out as short-term rentals?
I'm the opposite. Can they live in whichever structure they want on their property and rent out the other as a long-term rental?
Okay. So, yes, in some circumstances. So, it's not, the regulation is not about owner occupancy, it's about primary residence. So, if you have an ADU and a main home on a property, as long as it's, as long as the dwelling unit is their primary residence, they can rent that dwelling unit out as an STR. What can't happen, where there's, where there is a limitation of what Phil was talking about, is where the primary residence and the license holder uses their ADU as their full-time home and doesn't rent out the main structure as either a long-term rental or wants to run the main structure as full-time STR. That's not allowed. So, if the primary, if a resident lives in the ADU and wants to rent out the main home as a long-term rental, the long-term renter with their permission could get a license and rent out the primary home on a short-term basis. Yeah, there's a couple of different scenarios going on here.
That sounds like a subtly situation.
Yeah, it's, and that's honestly, it's allowed in apartments, in condos, or anything like that. If the primary resident, whether or not they own the property or a long-term renter, has permission from the property owner to run an STR out of their home, they can obtain a license and do so.
Okay.
Yeah. So, the one thing that we're trying to guard against is where you have two dwelling units on a lot, an ADU and a primary dwelling unit, and the owner wants to live in the ADU full-time, not have any long-term resident in the primary structure, and use that primary structure as a full-time commercial use through full-time STR thing. Because nobody would be living in that primary structure on a full-time basis and would, that would, full-time, that big structure wouldn't be somebody's primary residence. So that's the one scenario that we're trying to guard against. So there could be instances where the primary resident lives in the main structure as a primary residence and they move into the ADU on a temporary basis while they're renting out the primary structure, that the primary resident lives in the main structure and rents out both at the same time. But there won't be a, the only prohibition is when they want to move in full-time to the ADU and not rent out the main home as a long-term rental. That scenario wouldn't be allowed. So it's a very limited thing.
We don't have any mechanism in place or program or rental or landlord registration program to even know that they are or are not, you know, where, which one their, the owners live occupying and?
When they apply for the license, they will have to provide multiple forms of identification and proof that the home is their primary residence. This is how most of the municipalities work, and we have tools available to us and resources available to us to check that. People will try to game this, absolutely. And what will likely happen is that we'll become in knowledge of that situation, either through a neighbor or some other means, and then we will investigate that situation and to the best of our ability, try to gather evidence and prove if there's a violation or not on there. So, yeah, there, actually a lot of these provisions are kind of hard to enforce without somebody looking and looking for these violations. And the benefit of having the regulation in place is not necessarily to prohibit everything from happening all the time.
Right.
It's to when we have evidence that somebody's violating something, we can collect that evidence and then proceed to prosecute them under the code.
Not because we're trying to catch somebody, but that we're just trying to, like you said, coming out of the gate with some education, and then we have a piece of paper to say, but we've got these rules, and then we can always, you know.
Or you've attested to this, and now we've had proof that this is not a true statement.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And to your point that, you know, because this is fluid, if we started to see the same thing over and over, that like, this isn't working for people, it's not working for us, it's not working for you guys that own these properties, and we ought to be reconsidering that. So.
Yeah. I suspect most of the issues we'll have are just around like routine complaints that we have in other situations, parking, noise, disrespectful neighbors type of stuff. And we'll investigate those as we investigate all the ones not related to STRs and looking into those types of things.
I feel like that we've had lots of conversation about the opportunities to, you know, of kind of like, how far do we go and where do we pull ourselves back? And so, I don't, I don't feel like, you know, a couple of my questions are sort of related to that because they've come up as concerns through the public process or even some comments tonight. But I feel like we aren't going to really please everybody in every, you know, STR situation that exists. But this is definitely, I think that, you know, I'm glad that we're finally to tonight, attended some of those early meetings in 2019. And so, you know, it's, I think that the, there, it's been interesting to have, to see the engagement, see the conversation and people interested, you know, and I feel like there's definitely interest in the community to have this in place. I did want to just address the final comment of our final public input. Jonathan Wautner, that was your name, Mr. Wautner? Is that your last name?
Vought.
Vought, Mr. Waut's comment. I'm sorry that you didn't know about it until recently, and I'm sorry those you've talked to didn't know about it. We have a lot of ways that we really try to push out information. So, sign up for, go to our website and sign up for all the, check all the boxes so that you get all the emails, because we certainly want you and your friends, neighbors, and business associates to know what's going on in the city. And come anytime, always here.
No, I saw that I could even make an appointment to have a Zoom meeting with the guests or something. So.
Yeah, thanks.
We do that? Cool. Okay, good.
For this topic, we do.
Oh, okay. Oh, right.
All right. So, any other questions before we move on? Counselor Briggs?
A scenario where they, it's from broad a couple times, where they're like, we have long-term and short-term in the house. Like, what, do they need two different licenses? Like, how does that, what does that look like?
We don't regulate. We, we don't regulate long-term, so the long-term renters don't go through the city for any kind of license approval in order to do that. And then the short-term rentals, yeah.
So then, I don't, I guess I don't understand what the concern is, if they're renting a long-term for like six, six months and then, or nine months, and then there's three months where it's short-term.
Can you be a long-term renter and run Airbnb part of the year? That's kind of, it sounds like...
I just don't...
Yeah, it doesn't make...
Yeah, sorry.
You can't, yeah, like, the, like, you have to, like, think about it with the relationship of primary use versus subordinate use. So, yeah, there is a tipping point theoretically, under our proposal, where somebody can rent out their home a lot, and they still live in that home, and that's their primary residence. But the, like, Lafayette is not a resort community, we're not a big city, there's a limited market here, and we think the chances of that happening are fairly slim. We've heard through our outreach also that it's, it's, people think it's an easy thing to do, and it's not. It's, it's running a business. And so some of them get into the, to the business to try it out, and they find out it's hard and it's not worth it. Some people just don't put the effort in, and they're not successful in renting out their, their property. What we're trying to avoid, though, is, is situations where you do have, you do have somebody that's proficient, and that the bigger piece of the property turns into a different use than residential. So, right, STRs are accessory to a residential use, and so when you take away the residential use and you're running it full-time, you're essentially running, as Phil has mentioned, a hotel. Regardless whether it's only occasionally or all the time, you're changing the dynamic of that property by allowing the larger structure, the more impactful structure, to operate only as a hotel instead of a residence. And you're also eliminating that unit from the housing market, too, which we need for a long-term housing supply, so, yeah.
We'll go to Counsel Barnes, and then we'll get to our deliberation.
Thank you, Mayor. I still strike one, we had public comments about people who are aging in place needing the ability to rent out two or three different spaces. And I, I think I heard that there was a challenge with two or three rooms, and I'm guessing that was because the person was saying that they, and someone in aging, you know, who needed this income was renting to two separate people. So that would, that would be over the limit, that, is that what I understood?
Yes.
Because there's more, I just, just to make sure I understood that. And then we, I'm so curious about the Airbnb thing, where, we could talk about that later, but, so if someone is supporting our community with people who need that type of income, if we're limiting it to two or three rooms and it also supports the community, how are we impacting, when we look down the affordable, accessible housing for, for local people? Are we, could we potentially be providing housing for people who are vacationing here versus people who live in the area and need a separate type of housing? I'm just wondering how this rolls around people who are struggling to find housing. And, and yes, it's short-term, but if, if you're waiting for a new job or trying to, you know, moving to different places, maybe you short-term rent. I don't know, it just seems interesting that you can have the cover of Airbnb, we don't know you're here, but there's some tax money coming over, and the people who are looking for a place to live can't easily find a spot. And I don't know if this is making sense, but I'm getting a little stuck with.
Yeah, I think I'm going back to a couple of things when I'm listening to you, back to the ordinance, that it, it would allow the rental of, you to be in the rental and then also rent out some rooms, or you could leave and rent the entire house. So what we heard from some folks is that they go to the in-laws, they go on vacation, while they're away, they, they rent out their, their home as a short-term rental. You're right in that the simultaneous rental to more than one party, this ordinance wouldn't allow that. And so I, I think...
For short-term rentals.
Yeah, for short-term rentals, but if it triggers past that 30-day mark, so they're here searching for jobs or at a temporary, you know, job at the hospital or something, and it's two months, three months, then it, it just wouldn't matter.
Then it's long-term.
Yeah, it's long-term, after 30 days.
Somebody can always do a month-to-month lease.
That was my question of up to 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah, and I do want to clarify, because there was something else in your question and in the statement as well. There's not a limitation on the number of rooms you can rent out in your house. If your house has three bedrooms, you can rent out three bedrooms.
Well, there is a limitation.
The limitation is to the number of people in the rental on the size of your house. So if you only have a two-bedroom apartment or a two-bedroom condo, you're limited to renting out to six people at, at one time in one party. So you can't have like 20 people staying in a, I'm being absurd, right? If you have a larger house, the number's higher. So two people per bedroom plus two is the, is the, to any one party wanting to rent out the property. And that's to kind of stop the big parties, the big, the rentals for parties and other things as well, so.
Thank you.
All right, so with questions being finished, I will close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to counsel deliberation and a vote. Some things we probably want to discuss is what staff presented in front of us, definition of primary residence. We also had some folks that have a comment mentioning room limits, enforcement, other things like that, so that could be part of the deliberation, but, and we obviously have recommendations as well. Planning Commission, their date versus city, since the initial recommendation, their date. What do we all think? What are our thoughts? What do you want to do? We'll go to Counsel Sampson.
Okay, so first of all, I think this really helps with attainable housing, which is why I support getting short-term rentals out there for this. Number one, I do think we should have a software go-live date on January 1st. In my experience of watching the state put these housing programs, it'll take them six months, sorry, it's going to take you about six months to get all this up and ready, because once you go live and then you start telling people about it, it takes a while to get going. And so watching this on a different program, one, go-live date on software is tough. You can, you're going to have bugs in it. So if you want to change it to that March, as that's when we start enforcing, that's fine, this is for you, counsel, but January 1st go-live date on software is really important, based on what they're saying in terms of, let's give people the opportunity to get registered. The other thing, I have no problem with the current definition of primary residence in that, so, that's me.
Counsel Walton?
I support January 1st go-live. What I'm hearing is that the reason for some, for extending it was to allow time for HOAs, but they're going to need lots and lots of time, and they will, they can do it whenever they want there. So I don't, I don't think having extra time for that reason makes sense. I like the January 1st date, feels clean, and it sounds like you've already done your homework to be able to support that. I like, I don't have an opinion for a reason to change the staff recommendation on the definition of primary residence. I, I feel like for aging in place, I, I have long felt that supporting people who are interested in aging in place or have limited resources that sort of really create a lot of financial boundaries and burdens and require them to have to live in place, the opportunity to rent out other spaces in their home on a long-term basis, or, you know, to have caregivers or, you know, people in the community rent it out is, would be a great program. I'd love, I'd love to see us do something where we're creating a program and helping residents of Lafayette understand how they, how they can do that and support them on learning how to be landlords and so on and so forth. So I think that I'm not, I'm not concerned about some of the two-room limits and those kinds of things, because it sounds like that somebody could consider, you know, turning it into a, to bed and breakfast, if that's something that they're interested in, in being, so we have, we have paths to be able to do things, but maybe to do multiple things, maybe that is a little bit restricted with what we're talking about. But I do, I hear that, I like what I hear from staff, just in terms of, you know, it's going to be a bit of a learning process for everyone, and so I think that because we've had, I feel like a pretty robust conversation with people, if they didn't know, I know that you all would be very happy to, you know, walk, walk through the information with people so that they know. So I like it as is and with the proposal of effective date January 1st.
Great, thank you. How do others feel? Counsel Briggs?
I, I'm in support of it, and I like the January 1st date. HOAs can keep their covenants or change it at any point.
Mayor Protem, any thoughts?
The way it is.
Okay, Counsel Barnes?
I have some concerns about the enforcement piece, but at the same time, I think that also, I think enforcement extends to Airbnb, the company, the companies as well, so I think there's more to go there, so, but I think we should go live on the first. And HOAs will follow up when they will. And the definition of primary residence, I like what the city has, so I'm not there.
Okay, so I think what we need to do is, once again, are you all seeing this in your packet?
No, but we can read from there.
Okay, I know, I'm just making sure, but then, but what I am hearing is overall, like, when it comes to the effective date, that would be the January 1st instead of what's supposed to be March. And then everything else...
Yeah, it's different, the packet's different. So do you want us to use this one on the screen?
We just...
This is fine, and you could probably just leave out the underlined portion, right? Right, Mary Lynn?
Okay.
We could, we could, we could fill in, we could ad lib. I'm ready to go.
And, and, and just, just so you all are aware, Counsel Madonna had to go to work, and so she's, she's no longer with us, so we can do a, no need to do a roll call vote. Counsel Sampson?
I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 15, series 2023, amending Chapter 26, Development and Zoning, and enacting Article 5 of Chapter 55, Licenses and Business Regulations of the Code of Ordinances, City of Lafayette, Regarding Short-Term Rental Licensing Regulations.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second. Do we also need to include with an effective date now that ordinance has that already?
The ordinance currently contains a January 1st effective date.
Perfect. All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously, thank you. All right, one down, one to go. All right, so we're going to briefly take a three- to five-minute break, and then we'll come back for our second public hearing, thanks. Thanks. All right, so next up on our agenda, we have our next public hearing. This is item H. This is first reading of ordinance number 16, series 2023, for accessory dwelling units, regulations noticed in the Daily Camera on July 16, 2023. And let's, we'll begin with the public hearing, then I just opened it up. So we'll go into the staff presentation, then we'll go to public comment, council questions, close the public hearing, and then deliberate and vote.
Thank you. Good evening, again, mayor and members of council. So yes, the purpose of this item is to consider on first reading ordinance number 16, 2023, in regards to regulations for accessory dwelling units. We won't go over this again since, mayor, you just covered it. But first, we're going to dig into the background before going over the proposed ordinance. So first, just a note on why are we doing this now? So this expanding ADUs outside of the Old Town Residential Zone District, where they're currently allowed, has been a priority of the city for quite some time. This was coupled with the short-term rental project that was brought up pre-COVID and then tabled due to the pandemic. And so council showed some interest, I think late last year, in picking this back up. And so, since it was also tabled during COVID, there's also been a couple of policy documents that council has adopted that support this. The comprehensive plan includes, you know, support for housing diversity and the economic development and housing strategic plan specifically calls out code amendments for accessory dwelling units. We also met with council to have some scoping discussions similar to the other project that you just considered, and we came up with several project objectives. One is to consider allowing ADUs as a detached accessory units to existing single-family homes under the existing detached accessory structure standard. So what that means is effectively adding a use outside of Old Town of the accessory dwelling unit, but not changing what can otherwise be built in terms of height, location, size, and so on. So it just adds the use. We also want to explore different types of ADUs. So in Old Town, you can only do the detached versions. So we wanted to explore other types like interior conversions, which we'll show you some photos of, and attached ADUs. And to use it as to kind of create some relationships and build upon it with the land use code project that is now underway. So the process we underwent, this is a quick tactical effort that we're looking to do. We did some project research, scoping, mapping in January. We shared that scope of work with Planning Commission and Council in February. We had an engagement window in March and April that included an engagement site, received some good comments on that, connection newsletters. We held some office hours and on-demand meetings. We released the draft regulations beginning in July, held virtual office hours, which were fairly well-attended and had some interesting questions, and then presenting, presented the draft ordinance to Planning Commission for a recommendation an hour before council. So the recommendation here is really two main points, and that's expanding ADUs outside of Old Town and expanding the types of ADUs. So just going through, similar to the previous item, the section by section through the ordinance, the first section is permitted uses. And this would allow, so detached accessory dwelling units are what's currently allowed in the Old Town Residential Zone District. They've been there, allowed for about 20 years now. This would allow, expand the allowance of accessory dwelling units to most districts that allow single-family dwellings. And so those are included here on this map. Section 2, this is just a screenshot of section 2. It includes the rear yard setback and building height limitations for the different zone districts. And again, we're not changing what can otherwise be built. All we did was basically fill out the bottom part for accessory dwelling units, and you'll see that those match the top lines for what could be built. And so in this case, if you could build a shed, you could build the same-sized structure, only in this, this instance, it could be an accessory dwelling unit. I will highlight that the height limit outside of the Old Town Residential Zone District is 16 feet. So that would allow a one-story accessory dwelling unit. And this is one of the things that we heard from community members, that we weren't going far enough. And so in Old Town, you can have a two-story ADU, and that's where you see the, a top garage ADUs. And the height limit there is 20 feet. We weren't comfortable recommending that as part of this short tactical effort because the context in Old Town, where you have alleys that can buffer some of those impacts and allow for better access, is much different than a lot of the areas outside of Old Town, where it's a traditional, more traditional suburb, in the backyards, back up to each other. And so we saw that as needing a bit more engagement with the community. There'd probably be broader interests. And so if we were to look at tweaking those, we would recommend doing it during the land use code project. Section 3 includes some definitions. So the definition of an ADU is unchanged. And so those, the bullets on the left are unchanged. And so it needs to be located on the same lot as a single-family home. It's incidental or kind of secondary to that home, and it's excluded from a density calculation. The pieces that we add was just clarifying and kind of subbullets in the definition of defining a detached and attached accessory dwelling unit, which is what we're proposing to be allowed. Section 4 includes standards. And so these regulations would allow those different types of ADUs. The standards are broken up into three sections. One is standards that apply to any ADU regardless of the type, standards that are applicable specifically to detached ADUs and those that are applicable to attached ADUs. Again, we're not changing any of the dimensional requirements. Like, it's still a 750-foot size limitation. Front setbacks, heights, and things like that are remaining unchanged. But digging into the standards for all ADUs, we are recommending some additional design considerations. And so first, we would require a similar level of design on all sides of the ADU, just to avoid blank walls. That mobile homes, camping vehicles, RVs, and so on, things that aren't affixed to a foundation, wouldn't be eligible to be an ADU. And then we have a carve-out for historic preservation because sometimes you want to deviate from these design standards in order to have an addition to an historic property or do something else, some kind of alteration, and we didn't want to get in the way of that. And so if you need it for historic preservation, then you don't have to comply with these design rules. So a detached ADU, these are just some character images of detached accessory dwelling units. They're, they're typically placed behind or set back from the main structure. They can be combined with another structure like a garage, and they work best when there's alley access. The only additional requirements that we're recommending here is, on corner lots, we would recommend that detached ADUs orient either towards the main street or the side street. And to be responsive to some of the comments that we heard through the public process around impacts to neighboring properties, when a detached ADU is within 10 feet of a side or rear property line, we would require that the entrance just be located away from that. And so there's that entrance, the light leading into the entrance isn't directly next to somebody's property, if that makes sense. Yeah. So there's two other types of ADUs. Each of them are combined into that one definition of attached. But there's interior conversions, which are generally a second-floor basement. And then there's attached ADUs, which is in addition to the house that are shown here. We are recommending that with these attached ADUs that the entrance appears subordinate and secondary to the main home, that no stairways are located on the front facade of the building, and that the roof and building forms are just similar to the main home. And so it doesn't stick out too much. And then, as you can see, there, the examples shown there, particularly on the right, achieve that. So what did we hear? We heard overall support from community members about this, about expanding ADUs outside of Old Town. A lot of folks were interested in constructing an ADU outside of Old Town, though some members felt we're not going far enough. So we felt this, we looked at this as a quick tactical effort to really move the needle on a community goal. They prefer that we have a larger height outside of Old Town that we noted earlier, and that things like on-street parking should count towards the required parking, which for an ADU is one space. We did also learn that this is hard for homeowners to do. And so the planning, the design, the construction, it's really challenging and hard work, and more resources are needed. And so that's not something necessarily that we can put in the code, but it's something that can inform the implementation of this. And it's something that I think a lot of cities have done a lot of good work on that we could kind of survey. Neighborhood impacts, and so really thinking through how to minimize any of those neighborhood disturbances. From what we heard, we tried to put reasonable design standards in place that would try to address those in the, in the ordinance. And then affordability. We did hear in some of the listening sessions, some of the office hours, and then in some of the comments to council, why aren't we connecting these? Like, where's the affordability piece of this? These would just be market rate ADUs, and it's a, it's a valid, valid point. We have not done a deep dive into all the different levers that can be pulled for accessory dwelling units and affordability. But from our understanding, there's likely kind of two buckets to consider, and those would be regulatory incentives and, and financial incentives. Regulatory incentives would be waiving things like no more parking requirement or a bigger building in exchange for the homeowner, deed restricting the ADU to be affordable to, to homes under a certain income threshold. The financial incentives, which is what was suggested in council's comments, is, is oftentimes things like fee waivers and financial incentives in exchange for that affordability deed restriction. Establishing something like this, when we were thinking through this, would likely, we would recommend be a separate conversation with council, potentially as part of a discussion around the 2024 work plan. And to just highlight one example with our thinking is that the Economic Development and Housing Strategic Plan has a goal of identifying all these different funding pools out there that we can go after. And if we were to have a more strategic, holistic discussion with council, you would have the information you needed to say, should those funds be put towards an ADU incentive? Or should, are they better put towards other goals like resident acquisitions of local home parks, land banking, and so on? And so we looked at it as a, it's a pretty big discussion. We need to do more, we would need to do more research on. But we would also want to have the opportunity to provide council with all that information so you can make a strategic decision. Also, these were just a couple of examples. Boulder has a regulatory and a parking incentive for affordability. Durango has a financial incentive that is offered if you rent your ADU to a local person, where a local, someone in the local workforce. In Grand Junction has a financial incentive for, if you do not rent your ADU as a short-term rental, or if you need restrict it as affordable. So there's, there's other case studies out there that we could look at, but it's not something, again, that we've taken a deep dive into. Next steps, similar to the previous item, we would bring the second reading of the ordinance to council on September 5th. This is the proposed motion language that we can bring back on the screen following the public hearing and council questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. So this is a public hearing. If you wish to speak, please fill out a yellow form. You'll have five minutes to do so, and pass it over to Clerk Beck. So we'll begin with Dave Dvork.
Yes, thank you. And moving on to ADU specifically, the ADU proposal, as I read it initially, and now I see some welcome changes tonight, but when I read it initially, it looked like it was asking for breathing room to approve a new ordinance using existing city policies, mainly expanding beyond Old Town, with the following implication, that other changes can be made when the land use code study is implemented next year. Now, while many ADUs are really, and I've read quite a bit about this, will probably be built for extended family use. That's a big part, I think, of what we're going to see. So they're kind of self-regulating perhaps in the affordability area of sorts. But I think the city definitely needs to institute guardrails to control those that will be in for profiteering only. And we fear there will be obviously some of that out there. You know, when there's a buck to be made, there's a lot of people running after those bucks. And so I'm pleased to hear, Phil had to say here about looking at some possibilities to make affordable ADUs available in the future. And so I hope that the city follows through on that, what I heard. And in fact, we'll be able to guarantee pretty much that there will be guardrails in place soon, if not by next year, when the land use codes are implemented. One last thing, I do want to, again, remind you, just like STRs are a housing item, you remember my early housing, director of housing pitch? ADUs are another example of affordable housing concepts out of the toolbox. This is a whole nother area for housing. And can be, you could allow five, six, seven things together that all have to do with housing, affordable housing, to make it the case on, making or hiring or creating a position for full-time housing director. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. All right, next we have Vicki Euland.
Hi, Vicki Euland, 203 West Simpson Street. It's the last time I've ever talked to you guys up here tonight, so. I just, as excited as I was about the STR ordinance, I'm like triply excited about this one. Have hoped for this for years, and to actually see you guys voting on it tonight is, is, I guess, really a sad commentary on my life about how thrilled I am about that. But I support everything in the ordinance. I also agree that I would really like to see council and staff work on ways to make ADUs affordable. Right now, I'm seeing Old Town ADUs going for 2,000 bucks a month. You know, I mean, and that's market rate, you know? Seth's house, the Circle Motel, has 2,000 bucks a month. You know, so it's, you know, whatever we can do to, and I don't begrudge anybody trying to, to, you know, get market rate, but whatever we can do to encourage people to make these affordable housing, especially for our workforce, I think would be great. So I urge you to pass this. Oh, one other thing, I really like being able to add the ADUs to an existing house. I think that's a, a great way to open it up for people who don't want to build a separate structure. And also homeowners associations, where for instance, if you're just turning your basement into an ADU or something like that, is not, doesn't seem like it would be so intrusive. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. So the next comment is from Sabrina Santa Clara, but I believe she left. So, is she still here, Sabrina? No? Okay. I'm not seeing any more people that were speaking in person, so I will go to our callers. We have a caller with a phone number ending in 253. So caller ending in 253 will give you the ability to speak, and then you may get started. Caller ending in 253, you may begin. And they're back to being muted. And they're unmuted. Caller 253, if you'd like to speak, please go ahead.
There we go. Sorry about that. I had myself on mute. I've never done a Zoom or an online call before.
No problem.
This is Jesse Levine. I live at 408 East Cleveland. I'm a local resident and architect, and been active in the residential space in the area and doing a lot of ADUs. And so we're very excited to see the progression of this ordinance, and think it will be really great for the City of Lafayette for several reasons, one of which being attainable and affordable housing, as well as the ability to age in place. You know, we've done several projects around where some of these ideas, you know, have come to fruition, and we've felt they've been really great to see, you know, I meet those folks in town. And it also comes, obviously, as a reduced development cost, right, because of existing purchase of land, as well as development costs reduced through utilities and things like that. So we're very excited and happy to see that this is moving forward, and I think it'll be really beneficial. I guess the one comment I would make is just to make sure that we're, as this progresses, considering some of the requirements with things such as parking, I know suburban uses that might become potentially a little bit more difficult, so making sure that there's opportunity for subdivisions and other opportunities there to develop ADUs as well, I think could be quite great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Can you state your name one more time?
Sure. Jesse Levine.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. So I'm not seeing any other, any callers online. I'm also not seeing anyone in person, so we will close public input, and we will move on to council questions. And just so councillors are aware, Councillor Sampson has joined us online, so she is here. Council questions, if we have any. Councillor Briggs.
I'm a little confused about the height requirement or restriction. Are they allowed to put an ADU on top of their garage?
In Old Town, in the Old Town Residential Zone District, 20 feet would allow that. Outside of Old Town, though, it would be limited to 16 feet, which would not allow for that second story.
On detached.
On detached.
Yeah.
If it's an attached, so if you want me to bring up some of this?
Yeah, because I think it's like page 380, where it says Section 4 standards, it has like, no, older. That one. Because it shows these different pictures, right? So are they allowed to do everything that's in that?
Yeah, so if it's attached to the house, it would need to meet the requirements that apply to the principal home.
Gotcha.
Which has a higher, you know, height limit and so on.
Okay.
So those aren't intended to be plans or anything.
No.
Just representative, yeah.
Right. I just figured if they were examples, it would.
Yeah. It's a great question.
And the square footage, same thing, 750.
Yep.
Okay.
So in a basement, basement ADU would still be limited to 700.
It would still be limited to 750 for an interior ADU.
If they already have a tall garage, they can change, the height's already there, right? So they can change it to an ADU if it's already there, existing. Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Councillor Walton, do you have a question?
Thank you. So why limit it for interior or attached to 750? Especially interior. If you have a basement that's 800 feet, why not just finish it all?
It's a good question, yeah. It's just, I think with the short tactical effort, our goal was to do the expansion, but keep the underlying limitations like the size limit the same. And so I think at this point, we felt that more analysis would be needed to, should it be 800 if it's a basement? Should it be, you know?
I can add to that, like, it's different than a duplex. So duplex doesn't have any limitations at all. So.
So, yeah, what Phil was saying is like, ADUs, we had to start somewhere. And so if we want to start talking about allowing duplexes to occur everywhere in the city, that's a completely different conversation. Just like if we wanted to change the definition of family to allow different co-housing options, that's a different conversation. We want to tackle all of that with the land use code. And so when we came to council with an approach to expanding ADUs, one of the considerations to separate it from the overall land use conversation, to meet a specific deadline to get this thing done quickly, we had to tactfully limit the changes that we're proposing within the community. And so right now, ADUs are defined as, again, subordinate, it's very similar to STRs, they're accessory structures, accessory dwelling units, it's in the name, they're subordinate to the primary structure, and by that nature, it's limited in size and scope on the property. When we do talk about the land use code, there are conversations around, are going to be conversations around other opportunities. So if we change the definition of family, then it opens up the opportunity for roommates without having to create a separate dwelling unit within an existing home. So it's a cheaper alternative to doing a basement conversion with fire separation, a kitchen, a separate kitchen, and so forth. When we talk about different types of homes other than single-family detached, the community conversation needs to be had. Right now, the comp plan talks about allowing potentially duplexes to exist in corner lots, but maybe there's another opportunity to like, change the definition of ADU for attached ADUs. You can go to maybe 900 square feet or something like that. But those have bigger impacts on the community that we're just not able to engage with right now, in this six-month period that we're trying to get this done. So, yeah.
So I'm hearing a lot of, we're going to get to that.
Yes.
How would that be communicated to someone who comes in today, should we pass this, or when it goes into effect, if we pass this, that maybe would benefit from the, we're going to get to that, with their particular situation, their goal?
We already have those conversations. Like, we have those conversations about.
You are, you're saying you are having those conversations with people.
Like, when people come in and say, I want to do this.
I want to do my whole basement, it's 1,000 feet. And then you're saying, well, our limits are.
Right now, it won't happen, but this is going to be something that we're looking at too with the zoning code update. And it might offer a way to do it without having to go through hoops that you might have to do right now.
Could you recap what that list is of things that you hope to do?
Yeah.
And I'm sorry to ask you that, but I am almost ready to vote no. As much as I want to be a part of a council to vote yes, but the fact that I have said every ADU conversation, we've talked about affordable housing, aging in place, and none of those things are on here. In fact, there's not even anything in the staff memo that says, we're going to get to that.
Yeah. And respectfully, I would like to remind council, when we had these conversations
I'll remember.
On a workshop, we were wanting to take a holistic approach, but we got.
There was interest.
There was interest in doing this separately and sooner. And so we created a strategy to do that, and I understand the frustration. I completely understand the frustration. Other councils have been asking for this for many years, so I understand that.
Yeah.
And so with the zoning code, the engagement approach with the zoning code, we have much more resources behind it, we have a little bit more time behind it, we have intent behind it, and so things like definition of family, different housing choices within our existing neighborhoods, so like, other than single-family detached, parking requirements, the size and height of things, those are all conversations that we want to have within the zoning code project. We think they're needed conversations. We think there's innovation and structural change needed in our zoning codes, and we're intending to do that as part of the zoning code project. We have the budget, we have the time, we have the space to do that. The affordable housing conversation, as Phil, the affordable housing piece that Phil mentioned, again, it's a really difficult conversation that needs council to consider financial resources and staffing resources. And this is a zoning conversation, so we're focused on zoning. We would love to have these conversations with council. The Economic and Housing Strategic Plan sets up these conversations. Our opting in the Prop 123 unlocks a large funding pool that would give us the city additional financing resources to have these conversations, in addition to partnerships with other agencies, in addition to things like land baking, about aging in place, and all this other stuff. So very difficult, very difficult problems to solve, very expensive problems to solve, and very time and resource-intensive problems to like, have conversations on, and we should have those. We absolutely should have these. And we're not making excuses about why we're not having those. We're just, it's not part of this, the scope of this tactical exercise that council asked us to engage in.
Thank you for going through that list. I appreciate that. And I do, and I do recognize the iteration of conversation that we've had, and your, and staff's interest in what you've expressed. In terms of HOAs, how would, how, what are, how do HOAs fit in all of this, if you can remind us tonight?
Yeah, very similar to all these conversations that we have. If HOAs don't have covenants that prohibit these types of things, then they would be allowed. If HOAs have covenants that might preclude some of these things from occurring that are more restrictive than the city regulations, then that's for them to enforce. The city will be entertaining any application that meets our zoning codes and building codes, and it's up to the property owner to understand whether or not there's a restriction on that within their neighborhood.
Okay. And that would go for interior, anything?
Yes.
Defined as an HOA?
Yes.
So if an HOA was interested in modifying their covenants, would there be a similar conversation of, we have some other things we're considering, you might want to wait, or would you, would you go through and sit down and kind of have that conversation with them, similar to a homeowner?
Yeah, if they want, if they approach the city, we're always transparent about the work that we're trying to do and the work that we're planning to do for their consideration. Yeah. I do think with HOAs, and this is worthy of exploring, is that there is some ability for councils to co-opt HOA or prohibit HOAs from enacting things like installation of bluegrass. So if council wants to explore some of these topics that we're doing, like, I think coming up, definition of family might be a big one, where council might see that as imperative, that it's equitably discharged across the entire city, there might be a legal ability for council to enact some sort of law that would prohibit HOAs from doing that. It's nothing we looked into here on the ADU thing, but it's something that we could look into on any regulation that that council wants to pass.
Let me just make sure, let me just repeat that in a slightly different way to make sure I understand and that what I'm thinking is accurate. You're suggesting we maybe look into a way where we could limit HOAs from making, from making more restrictive.
Yes.
Covenants in order to expressly encourage equitability of the.
Further legitimate government interest in some outcomes on our regulations.
Well, I can think of like, all the work we've done, lots of things that would be, that's very intriguing to me.
Yeah, we would need to engage with the attorneys about that.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah. And I think that it's, you know, it's a fair thing to have an engaged HOA community in those conversations too, because, you know, there are a lot of things, and passing covenants in HOAs is not necessarily an easy thing. It's expensive, and sometimes it's not majority, it's a supermajority or whatever you call it. So that could be, that's a, it's a big deal.
Yes.
So, okay, well, that can be on the list way down toward the bottom, but.
Yeah. I, there's so many, there's such a desire in the community to do the right thing, to do the right thing, to go above and beyond, and we understand that. And it's not like we're, staff is not actively opposing those things, they're just very complex conversations that we need to have intentionally. There's resource, there's resource requests with all of these things. Council needs to be able to weigh those decisions and provide direction on what is our priority as a community.
So we've been talking a lot, and questions have come up about HOAs and comments about HOAs. Is there, should we be broadening that though, when we have these conversations and saying HOAs in metro districts? Are they, would they be different in some of these conversations that we're having, or with the, with a similar suggestion or covenants, like in a metro district, a residential metro district also apply here? Is it sort of, that's a whole nother?
Yeah, I'm not familiar with metro districts enforcing covenants, private covenants. I'm familiar with metro districts acting as maintenance, like, they take on the maintenance responsibilities of HOAs, but I'm not familiar with that arrangement. So maybe we need to, if that exists, I'm just not familiar with it.
So metro districts are typically a financing mechanism for public improvements and to provide services in lieu of the municipality providing services. You know, certain services is delineated by the metro district, but I don't, I'm not familiar with whether a metro district would ever enforce a HOA covenant. That would be a separate covenant if there was an HOA.
So a metro district doesn't have like, an architecture board, where you have your paint color approved and?
No, those are typically separate architectural review boards, or something.
They might be created at the same time, or, you know, as both existing in the same development, but, yeah, I'm not familiar with them actually getting involved in architectural standards.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
Okay. Any other questions? Councillor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question regarding the placement of a, an ADU on a corner lot, and it's, if I understand correctly, it's okay if it aligns with the side street or the primary street? How do you not align it with this? How does that not happen?
Yeah, I think that it's really just about orientation. And so if it's on that corner lot, we were just wanting it to be oriented to the front or towards the street on the side.
Not in an angle or something?
Not towards the neighbor, like, not towards the back and not towards the interior lot line, if that makes sense. So it's really about the orientation of it, front door.
Oh, the front door?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I guess I'm not seeing how, so you don't want, you don't want a front door that opens to someone, to the neighbor's house?
Yeah, it's kind of getting back to that.
Okay. So either the street, the front or the alley? Okay.
Exactly, yeah.
And on the corner unit, it doesn't really matter then? I mean, there's two places it could.
Yeah. Yeah, either or. I think we just didn't want to facing the opposite, towards, towards the interior lot line, towards the neighbor, or towards the rear lot line.
Okay.
The other neighbor, yeah.
The other neighbor, yes. The other question I had was, I did have a conversation with one of our commissioners about density, and brought up form-based versus use-based land use, and I was very interested in that concept. And in my head, this aligns, there's no problems with it aligning to, if we, if newer developments are more form-based, then there's no issues with this. It'll lay over in the, it actually popped up when we were talking about the other, the other three acronym thing earlier, but, so there's no issues there? It should be fine?
No, no, we've also shared the draft regulations with a consultant, helping us with that code, and no concerns there, and. And yeah, it's not uncommon, this, this will, we can work this into a form-based code. And a lot of the places where this would be built may not even have all of those form-based code elements. And so, yeah, no, no concerns from our standpoint.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. I don't believe there are any other questions, so we'll close the public hearing. I'll get a recommendation on the screen, please. If council would like to make a recommendation, please do so. Or if you would like to have more of a discussion deliberation on this, we can do that as well. What do we think? What are our thoughts? Counselor Walton?
Is there anything that we can do to include anything about affordable housing here in those ordinance? I mean, I'm hearing that there's a lot of conversation and there are some different ideas, you know, that staff's considered. I know that there are ideas floating around out in the community, you know, from folks that, that are real involved in the, in housing in East County. So, but I just kind of wonder like, is there even like a a little whereas that like we are going to be looking at these things? Because I am very, as much as I'm so excited about expanding ADUs, it is really, my, my interest in doing it is for, to allow people to age in place, to allow people to create space for caregivers or family to move in and have separate spaces if that's what they desire, and affordability.
Right.
More is better for affordability, but we don't, we're not even having this, you know, grand growth management conversation that I, you know? Like these are, those are all the things. So I, I don't know, I'm really, I'm on the fence right now. Somebody convince me, please.
Well, for me, it's like, sorry, Counselor Barnes.
I was just gonna ask for a little more clarification. You're talking about more than just in this, this motion.
Is there something that can say, PS, we're gonna, we're gonna do more on affordable housing in the ordinance? Or we come next time with a proclamation that lists these things that were, I mean, I wrote day, one day, one day maybe? Well, no, that was, that's on the HOA thing. During zoning, we are going to like list those things that there is an intention. This council today, when we pass this on second reading, if it goes next week, that it's also a proclamation that says, and we're doing this now, but we also want to go back and add in this consideration, that list that Director Brazel adds.
I would really like to see that, 'cause my main concern back, wait, was they, Steph had originally wanted to do this through this code and zoning and I felt I didn't, I wanted to be done right and through that process. And now it's like, well, yeah, we can't, we couldn't look at over 750, you know? And like that's, there were reasons why they had recommended it, and now I'm like...
Yeah, 'cause we, I mean, I don't know that there's a lot of pent-up demand. I don't know that this would necessarily get a lot of permits between now and, but somebody who is interested in like, oh, good, now I can consider this. And I was like, oh, wait a minute, my whole basement can't be that? So I'm gonna have to have a separate entrance for this 750? And it just doesn't start to make sense at all. And then, you know, I mean, it doesn't mean they can't have a caregiver move in or a family member. It just means they share, they're shared space and it's, you know? So there's ways around that, right? We just talked about long-term rentals and all the things you can do there too. You can rent out a room to anybody. But I, I don't, I just really would like the ADU to be, the reason we're doing it, I would love it to be more affordable. I'd love to hear from Counselor Sampson more too, if, if she's got any thoughts on, on, you know, how we, how we attach this ADU ordinance to anything affordable? And that as a priority for this.
I'll quickly jump in and then Counselor Sampson if, if you're ready. So for me, it's like this is, this ordinance itself will make Lafayette more affordable because it's, it's sort of the first domino. Like I know Director Brazel was mentioning all the things that we're going to get to. And I know you have frustrated, rightfully so, you have frustration and impatience with this. But I'm just glad we were able to expedite this process because if we were gonna do all those other layers, we wouldn't even be seeing this today. We'd be seeing it months down the road, you know? And so to me, it's like, okay, knock over this first domino. And then add, then after that, when the rest will fall, but it will take time.
How does this, how, how does this...
By, by expanding ADUs.
So creating, creating more supply?
Yeah. And so secondly, like follow-up question, 'cause I want to get more clarity on what you're seeking. 'Cause a proclamation to me doesn't make, make the right sense. Maybe, maybe, maybe a resolution, yeah.
That's what I meant to say.
And so you would want that, so pass this tonight, first reading, and bring a resolution next meeting? Essentially, you know, are council making a commitment to expanding on this ordinance in the future? To add more affordable pieces? Like how would that, how would that read? Like what do you think?
I think that it would be recognizing that this is the first domino or whatever the wording is. You know, that this is, that the intent of doing this is to get something started and for those who are interested, that, but there, there are other elements that with more time and more resources and as part of the zoning code, this list of things will be, will be, will continue to be discussed and considered as part of that zoning code.
So you would just like it formalized through like a press?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, there's no like jamming in, you know, some affordable piece to ordinance tonight. And, you know, and understandably for the reasons stated, so.
Let's go to Counselor Sampson and then Director Brazel.
Hi. So what we're talking about tonight is approving policy. But if we're gonna do something for affordable, that's a program. So just like the mayor had said, this is the first step. You have to have the ADUs be able to be put up. And then you ask staff to come back with information and data on those ADUs. What are they renting at? Are they going as short-term rentals or long-term rentals? And at that point, council could then put together a program, be that funding or information or deed restrictions, but that would be separate from that action.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up to her?
Sure.
So Counselor Sampson, Counselor Walton, do you, how would, like, how would after the fact deed restriction be, like what kind of a program after an ADU is developed be considered?
So what we would do is partner with like a, a nonprofit, typically a land trust. And we work with them because then they put a deed typically on the entire property. So it would be not only on the ADU, but on the, the primary house itself. And that way you could say, this has to be an affordable to whatever percentage AMI. But you'd want to do that because otherwise you run into the problem that Denver did where they tried to deed restrict. And then nobody read their deeds when they were selling their homes. And then they ended up selling them to people that were way above the affordability income level. So that's, that would be one way you would do it. So once the ADUs are there, you work with, you find nonprofits to work with to help you get those programs together. And again, you could use funding, maybe from Prop 123 if we were working with a nonprofit, and they would apply in for that fund. And maybe they would start to come up with other ideas.
But if you had a program before a nail is pounded on and drawings are done up and you are investing in it, aren't there, isn't there a program that would have more incentives if, if it included an incentive from the start to be deed restricted? Or how, 'cause I'm trying to understand like how they, what the incentive would look like after it's built?
Yeah, from what I heard from all of these organizations that are doing this right now, they are typically relying on donations from a property owner, developer, builder. That it's too, there isn't really, we'd be out of pocket a lot of money even individual houses. So there isn't a whole lot of incentive upfront. If you build it and then you decide, okay, I'm gonna deed restrict, that's a separate, that could be a separate process. I will say there's a consequence because once you deed restrict based on affordability of an income level, and let's say, let's say there's a couple that owns a house and they want to bring in family members. Once you start pulling in family members that are in that ADU and you've gotta deed restrict it to a certain income level, it's also based on the number of people in that household. So they could actually build the unit, do something to try to help, you know, people be able to afford something while they're saving up for a down payment. And they could, they could themselves create problems and not meet those affordability standards. It's so complex with this. That's why I say, what the mayor said as, this is the first step, and then start working on the second step is really the next thing we do after, you know, after deciding whether or not we want to approve this new policy.
Yeah, but I guess I don't, I don't necessarily agree with your statement that you, that you would, that there's policy separate from program. I, I guess I'm, I'd be, I'm more interested in incentives for affordability attached to an ADU ordinance from the get-go, and so...
Let's have Director Brazel jump in if that's all right? 'Cause I think he wants to...
Yeah, I want to expand on what Counselor Sampson is saying is like, so zoning is a tool that we have in our toolkit. There are other tools out there. And so Counselor Sampson talked about a programmatic approach. And so let's just talk about the zoning tools that we have. Like we can, we can allow things to be bigger in exchange for affordability. We can waive the parking requirement. We can, there's a few, a few development standards we do. But ultimately, those tools don't really work for ADUs because the bigger the structure is, the more expensive it is to build. And so you, when you build these things, you still, it's still, there's still an economics thing involved, right? People are weighing the amount of money it costs them to build these things and get financing for these things versus the income that they'll be generating to pay for it. And like making things more expensive or tinkering around the edges is what zoning would do. Like eliminating a parking space is not gonna save a lot of money. Is not a great tool to promote affordability. We could say, well, we only allow ADUs to be built in the community if they're deed restricted. That's another option too. But again, you still have to fight that, the economics of the deal. So if, if the economics don't work out, you need to bring financial incentive to the table in the form of a grant or something else in exchange for that. And it's gotta be of a sufficient value that it helps offset the economics of what the deed restriction would do to that ADU. And so there's also other programmatic things that are out there that we can explore. Like, like people, like most households are not experts in construction and design. And so there are nonprofits out there that like have developed pre-described floor plans that they, that they don't have to pay an architect to do. So there's like a lot of opportunity around the programmatic side of things. But that, that shouldn't just, that shouldn't discount the, the first domino that the mayor's talking about is, ADUs by their size and their construction are, are more naturally affordable than other types of housing. That 750 square foot, if that's what they build, ADU still has to compete with a 750 square foot apartment that comes with all sorts of other amenities with it. They still have to compete against other ADUs. And they still have to compete against having a roommate and just renting out a larger home together. And so like there is, there are market forces that, that here that will, will naturally, as more supply happens, like come to bear and like keep these prices low. It's not to say somebody's gonna build a, a Four Seasons luxury ADU out there and, and like cater to that particular market for that. That's probably gonna happen. But the more of these that come online, they're competing against each other and they're competing for the same renters and that apartment building's another housing stock in the city is then, and that naturally will regulate itself to some extent. So allowing these to happen is a good first step. Solving the programmatic side of things, like where do we get the incentive funding? So say like in exchange for $50,000 grant from the city or from somebody, you deed restrict the house. You have to figure out what, what amount of grant is going to offset the cost and revenue potential hit that they'll get to rent out this at a lower affordability rate. This is exactly what Willoughby Corners is about, right? The cost of the unit still is what the cost of the unit is. And so to offset the fact that they're getting less income and rent to pay for the cost of that unit, tremendous subsidies have to be brought to bear to make that unit affordable. And so that's, that's kind of the, the challenge of, of affordable housing in general. And ADUs are not exempt from that. And so we should absolutely explore these, these things. But again, we have to do it separately from a zoning regulation framework. The zoning, the zoning is not the tool for affordability in this case. Where zoning can be a tool is density bonuses, height increases, massive parking reductions for big buildings. That's where the compounding of the extra economic benefit or the cost savings helps with, with affordability on those larger, larger projects. Zoning, zoning as a tool for ADUs as an affordability incentive is not a great tool.
Yeah, I think this is what we can do tonight. We can vote on this ordinance as written while giving staff direction, as they already are doing, to look at these creative ways to make this more affordable. And I don't know if we necessarily need a formal resolution because we are giving the direction right now. And I think it's something that we're all kind of on board with, you know? And building off of, building off of this ordinance. And it, like I said, Steph's already working on that stuff.
And I think that the more we delay or trying to bet this to be part of a grander affordability piece, we're now preventing those individuals who are at that point, we're aging in place. We're not allowing them to expand. We have citizens, we have residents in one zone that have the right to do it and not in another simply because of where they live. And we're not allowing, 'cause I think that, I agree. I think there's some, a lot of things we need to do from affordability standpoint. But I think that comes with financial incentives. It comes with, you know, these are not gonna be cheap to build. It's not like you're gonna buy a prefab ADU and throw it out of your lot and be making tons of money off of it. I mean, there's a lot of costs into that. And how then do we change the curve, if you will, of your rent versus how much it costs you to build that? You know, I think that we are doing a disservice to those residents and families who are in place right now, waiting for something like this so they can age in place. So they can, you know, bring that mother-in-law onto their, you know, onto their house as, as they age, you know, to be able to take care of them. You know, we have my generation, it's the sandwich generation, right? We've got my kid, we've got my mom. And it's like, how do you manage that? And if we don't take the first step, push the first domino, then we're completely neglecting those people that are in need today. And so that's how I look at it. And I think that as a community, we've already shown our values when it comes to affordable housing. And I think that the further we delay, we're impacting those residents that could benefit from it today. So I see what you're saying, Counselor Walton, I agree with you. I will stand right next to you when we start finding the funding and the affordability. And I'll stand with any member of this council. But we have to be able to take the first step. And the first step is allowing those that are in need today to be able to access this program. That's how I look at it.
And since the growth management thing's kind of expired because of what happened at the state, that's not even a concern that once was when it came to having separate, creating separate units, right? Okay. You guys have convinced me, good job. I appreciate all your, I appreciate that, what you added to the points that Counselor Sampson was making. Thank you.
All right, would someone like to make a motion, please?
I will.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Unless Counselor Sampson wants to.
Give me a second. I move to approve on first reading ordinance number 16, series 2023, amending chapter 26, developing and zoning, chapter 20, water of the code. 26, Developing in Zoning, Chapter 20, Water of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Regulations for Accessory Dwelling Units.
Hello, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and second. Unless there's any other further deliberation, we will take a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Montgault?
Yes.
Counselor Sampson?
Yes.
Counselor Walton?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Barnes?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Job.
Okay, we got one more item left under regular business, and this is item I. This is resolution number, that was louder than you thought. This is Resolution 2023-45, Kensington, Tebow Annexation of Substantial Compliance.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, I'm, I'm presenting the first of several potential actions around annexation of this property. Usually what we're doing tonight is a fairly straightforward thing, but there's just a lot of, we haven't done an annexation in a long time as a community, so there's a lot of unknowns in the community about how this works and the process and all that, and I just want to spend a little bit of time walking through that. So if counsel will, especially for the folks that are probably watching at home, so if counsel will allow me to, to do that as I go through these slides, I, I appreciate that, even though this is a lady meeting. So, as counsel's aware, annexations are one of the most consequential, consequential land use actions that a community can make. And so tonight, I do want to take the time to explain the annexation process, how it ties in with our other land use reviews that may be coming for the city, and how tonight, tonight's accurate action around finding whether this annexation petition submitted to the city is in substantial compliance with state law is a, is a fairly technical exercise. And it, it doesn't do certain things and it does certain things, and I'm just going to clarify that as I, as I walk through this. So this is not a public hearing. I will go through the tech, I will go through the overview of the required findings of, under state law, that need to occur when a city receives a petition for annexation. We'll then answer any questions that counsel might have and ask counsel to deliberate and take action on that. So, what are we entertaining tonight? So the city has received a petition to annex property from Tebow Partnership LLP through Kensington Development Partners to annex approximately 35 acres of land that is currently in unincorporated Boulder County into the city of Lafayette. The property highlighted in orange on the screen is the subject parcel, and it's located at the southwest corner of Arapahoe Road and Highway 287. It is bordered by the city limits on the western, southern, and eastern sides. And immediately to the north and east of the property, there's a parcel that is owned by the town of Erie and is located within the town of Erie. That parcel is not subject to the annexation request because it's in Erie right now, that might change in the future, and counsel might see that request in the future. To the west, we have the Silo Neighborhood, which is under development. To the south, we have Coles and 24 Hour Fitness. And to the east, we have the Nine Mile Development in Erie, and then to the north, we have the Stonehenge Neighborhood that's in, in Boulder County. So regarding the annexation process, this is a high-level overview of that process. It is outlined in state law, so state law dictates how we have to work through the question of annexation. The process does begin with somebody, a property owner or property owners submitting a petition to annex their land into the city. The petition is then forwarded to City Council for a determination that the petition is in substantial compliance with the law regarding the form and content of that annexation petition. I'll talk more about what that means later. After finding substantial compliance exists, then there's some public notice that occurs, and a public hearing will be held at a future council date that will be established tonight to determine whether the annexation meets the statutory requirements to be eligible to be annexed into the city. Following that, which will occur at some point in the future, maybe in 2024, the actual request for annexation will be presented to council for, for consideration of whether or not we want to annex the property. There's a, there's a bit of a process to meet technical requirements, and then there's the substantial process of actually determining what, whether to annex a piece of property or not, and that's called the annexation hearing, and that happens much, much later in time. So at this time, we're at the first step, which is substantial compliance, and, and this in eligibility to determine whether the property can be annexed into the city, not whether the property should or will be annexed into the city. In order to assist our community and council in determining the question of annexation, we align the annexation process with the city's zoning and planning unit development process. The PUD process is a years-long process outlined in our code, and it begins with the sketch plan smittle. And so, we have to find, we have to initiate annexation procedures before we can actually hold hearings on the sketch plan, which is coming up for council consideration in September. And once we do all of this, the, the zoning, the final PUD will all line up with the, the question on annexation. So basically, what we're trying to do is test drive the car first, make sure we have all the information about what the developer is proposing to do on the property, make sure that it's, the development is something that we want as a community, work through all those details, and then once we have a final product, then ask the question on annexation and zoning. So don't do that first, do it once we know the answers that we need to know to be able to answer those questions. And so, there is some stuff happening in the next month, but it's the, it's the first part of a long process, and we want to make sure that we, we have all the answers we need before we ask counsel to make an impactful decision on whether the property should be annexed into the community. So what is substantial compliance? It's basically three things. One, it's a finding that the actual annexation petition submitted to the city meets state requirements in con, with regards to the content and allegations, and also that the petition is signed by at least 50% of the landowners owning more than 50% of the land area proposed to be annexed into the city. It establishes the eligibility, eligibility hearing date, and just to reiterate, finding of substantial compliance does not constitute final action on annexation by City Council, or it doesn't represent City Council's position on the feasibility or desirability of annexation. So with regards to the specific annexation petition in front of us, the petition was filed on August 8, 2023 of this year. The annexation petition is signed by 100% of the property owners, representing 100% of the property in question. The petition contains all the required allegations required by state law, and all those allegations are listed in the staff report, I won't go over those. And that the petition was accompanied by an annexation map meeting of the requirements of, of state law. The petition was also signed within 180 days of filing, so it's, it's a valid petition, the signatures are valid. If adopted by council, Resolution 2023-45 will find that petition, that the petition for annexation has been provided in conformance with the appropriate sections of state law, and it will schedule the public hearing to determine the eligibility of the annexation for September 19, 2023, at 6 o'clock or as soon thereafter in City Hall. And it also requires initiation of the public notice of the eligibility hearing required by state law, which is four weeks publication in a local newspaper. So something that we wanted to daylight for council is that the annexation petition that's being presented contains some conditions that are unusual in staff's experience. The petition is conditioned on the white, excuse me, the right to withdraw the annexation petition on the earliest of December 31, 2025, or any other date that might be outlined in a pre-annexation agreement or annexation agreement that is executed between the city and the petitioner. And that the city cannot finalize the annexation, even if they vote to approve the annexation at some point in the future, we can't finalize the annexation until they waive their right to withdraw the, the petition. The condition of the right to withdraw petition is not unusual. What is unusual is the length of time that they want to have after a final council action on annexation to occur. And so what we typically see is that there are, there are, there is coordination that happens if counsel were to approve this annexation, that we, we wait till a certain amount of time to finalize the annexation petition, or finalize the annexation by recording the annexation plaque and annexation ordinance. And it's usually, it's usually tied to the approval of zoning and the PUD. The applicant is in, has a sales contract with the landowner, Tebow, that won't allow them to close on the property until they have site plan approval. And site plan approval happens way after the zoning approvals occur. And so that is an unusual, that is an unusual condition that they put in the petition. Basically, what, what it's saying, unless we can negotiate a different date, which Steph is going to try to negotiate a different date, that a city council can approve the annexation, and the annexation won't become effective until years, potentially years later. That means a lot of time and, and, and resources are being put into it, the development, where the applicant could walk at any time should they fail to get any further entitlements that they want within the city. We oppose these conditions, and we, we tried to work with them before council meeting tonight to with, to strip those provisions from the annexation agreement. We could not come to an agreement on that. So we will seek to negotiate, there is language in there that we can negotiate a different date, we will seek to negotiate that different date to be more standard practice. We don't have a high level of confidence because of the contractual arrangement that's in place, that we would be successful in that, but we wanted counsel to be aware of this condition that's being placed in the petition. What, this, the, the city still has a tremendous amount of leverage on this, and the city is not in any shape or form precluding our ability to act on the annexation, whether to approve it or deny it, or to set terms with the annexation that the applicant may not agree with, and resulting in the annexation never, never occurring. So while it's unusual, we still maintain a great deal of control over the outcome of any project proposed into the city through an annexation process. So counsel has two, two options this evening, approve Resolution 2023-45, finding that the petition is substantial compliance with state law and all the stuff that goes along with that. And if, if that happens and we fail to negotiate different terms for a withdrawal period, then the right to withdraw the annexation petition is just enshrined into that, it, it's just enshrined into the petition. Counsel could also take no action this evening, due to the petition containing provisions unacceptable to the city. What that would look like is the applicant, could they come back and revise their petition, or attempt to revise their petition, or they can withdraw the petition and then the annexation just doesn't move forward? And that would probably delay the sketch plan. So if they were to attempt to revise the petition, attempt to negotiate with the, the landowner to come to more agreeable terms, that could delay the, the ability for us to hear the sketch plan beyond September, because we have to find substantial compliance before the sketch plan process can move forward. So with that, glad to answer any questions that counsel might have. City Attorney McFuffa is also here. I know we, we, there was a little bit of a curve off around there at the end, but we'd be glad to answer any questions counsel might have.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for putting that together and for, you know, because we, we had obviously public comment about a separate, separate petition, but thank you for like providing context for folks watching at home that may have signed that petition or been involved in it, as to what, where, what, what the decision tonight needs. So thank you for doing that. All right, so questions from counsel? Mayor Potem.
So if we decide to take no action, this is a, a question of the city attorney, are we liable for anything that, slowing down if we don't determine the, the terms of the applicant or the application to be what we're looking for?
So I, I wouldn't say there's any liability. If counsel took no action, it does put the petition in limbo, there's an expiration period of 180 days on that by statute. I would say a potential other option is that counsel could continue consideration of the resolution as well, or you can approve the resolution. I mean, so I would just add that as another way of looking at it, but your, your job tonight is to consider the information you've received from staff as well as the statutory requirements. This is a, this is a first step in the process that solely requires counsel to make a finding whether the statutory requirements for the petition have been met, and that is, that would be it tonight.
And so, that third option you just threw out there, as far as we can continue looking at that, would that just be a, basically a delay or tabling of the, of the?
That, that would give staff and the applicant more time to see if the applicant will be willing to revise the petition. I don't know if staff has a position on that, I don't want to...
Yeah, we, we don't think this is going to be resolved quickly. We're going to seek to negotiate additional terms, but that might, that agreement might not be ready for, for some time for council consideration.
But would, would, would approval of the ordinance tonight still allow you to negotiate conditions?
And we'd accept it.
So if counsel were to approve the resolution, staff would continue to, we, we would not be, we would not be legally bound to do anything except hold an eligibility hearing, and the process would continue to play out as Director Brazile?
I, I, I guess, yeah, overall, like, are we, are we hurting staff's ability, ability to negotiate some of the stuff that you've clearly stated you disagree with by approving this tonight?
No. We're not hindering our ability to try to negotiate this. Like, at this time, we don't, like, we think, we think if the more time we have, the more likely we could get movement on this. But as of right now, there's probably zero chance of, of getting that movement based upon what we know.
Unless this is a, okay.
Yeah. So, so what, the way I'm thinking about this is, is like, if counsel wants the project to continue moving forward through the sketch plan hearings, at least to get an opportunity to look at that, don't, this, by, by delaying the vote or by not acting on, on this tonight would, would hinder that process, that process would not, would not move forward.
No.
And it would be, it's, this is a very technical thing, and counsel would just want to wait, is that what, what we want to do with this project at this point in time? There's not a right or wrong answer to this.
Right. And I would add that if counsel does move forward with the resolution and the process continues on, you're, you're never legally bound or required to approve an annexation, whether that's a year from now or whenever. This step tonight does not mean the city will be annexing this property or that it has to, you have plenary legislative authority to decide whether to annex this property when the time to make that decision comes, and that is not tonight.
However, if we happen to decide in the future to annex it, we're bound by that date.
Unless we can negotiate it.
Exactly, yep. So there would, there's more opportunities, we'd have a development agreement, an annexation agreement, there's lots of opportunities for negotiation here, it's just at this point, the applicant has made it clear what their timeline is, that's all.
Yeah, and this is not, this is not a one, this is not a one-sided deal. We, we don't believe this, this is a one-sided deal, so they will be asking for things from the city.
Okay. All right, other questions? There are no more questions, we can take a motion, please. There are no more questions, we can take a motion, please.
I move to approve Resolution number 2023-45, finding substantial compliance of the Kensington TBO annexation petition and setting an eligible hearing date of September 19th, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion, second, any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilor Sampson?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
Councilor Walton.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Walsh?
Yes.
Councilor Barnes?
No.
Councilor Briggs?
No.
Mayor Monget?
Yes.
That motion passes, Board of Two with Councilor.
All right. Okay, well, that wraps up regular business and all we have left is staff reports. City Attorney's report.
I do not have any reports tonight, mayor, thank you.
Thank you, we have the city administrators' reports.
That weird, pulling it right up. So good evening, mayor and council. Have a few shout outs to let you guys know about. So the last two weeks, the Bob Burger Recreation Center's been shut down for its annual maintenance. This is a huge lift from staff to really spruce up, do paint, kind of that minor maintenance throughout the heavy use of the year. But what was really exciting about this shutdown, if you look at that bottom picture, is that we utilized a kind of underused racquetball space to open it up and provide additional workout space for our patrons, because if you've been to the rec center, kind of that little area gets really cramped with people trying to do their individual workouts. And so a fun fact, as of an hour and a half into yesterday, when we reopened, there were more patrons using that space than there had been in the past year for the racquetball facility. So we still do have one racquetball, still love our racquetball players that utilize it, but just realized through kind of different trends of what we're seeing in the recreation space that this was a higher and better use. We will be getting some logos, this is probably 80% done, but logos and mirrors in there to really make it full function. The second thing I have is that last week, we facilitated a conversation with our recent University of Virginia graduates. So if you recall, over the past year and a half, we've been sending key positions to this program that talks about high performing organizations. And the number one question we get when staff come back from this five day program is, cool, what's next? What are we going to do with this? And in lieu of sending all 200 staff to this, because it would be cost prohibitive, we wanted to start in on those conversations about, what do you think we should do? What do we do individually? What do we do as a team? What do we do as a city? And so these were the beginnings of conversations, but really excited to start to get our employees re-engaged with this program, because they come back really excited about all of these new things that they can implement and really want to make sure that our fellow colleagues kind of speak the same language. So more to come on that. Today is City Hall selfie day, so you may see some of our social media posts. The top two pictures in the middle and the right are some examples of our wonderful city employees that submitted for the City Hall selfie day. And then building on that, just a reminder, I brought up last meeting, but tomorrow will be our all employee event at Wanaka Lake. So there will be a few facilities closing early to allow staff to attend this, including City Hall, Public Library, the Collective, and the Police and Municipal Court. We set up some press releases around that earlier this week and last week. And then finally, earlier today, I emailed you about support for having the mayor sign a letter supporting a new solar garden. So this is out in the county, but it would primarily serve Lafayette residents and especially our lower income residents. So it's provided by a company called Cloud Break Energy, who approached manager Zorad to engage. They are going before the county commissioners and really would appreciate city's support in signing a letter saying that we would really like to see this solar garden help serve some of our community members. So I wanted to formally ask council, one, if you had any questions, but two, if you would be supportive of the mayor signing a letter to then send to the county commissioners.
Yep, thumbs up, all right.
All right, looking ahead, as I have now kind of over emphasized, 13 days until we start our 2024 budget introduction. This will be followed by the public hearings on October to meet our charter deadline. So this is really stepping into it, saying, here's some high level themes that we are seeing. Are we missing anything? That way we have ample time to incorporate any of council feedback. September 5th, regular meeting, the beginning of the meeting will be a joint sort of mini workshop with the Planning Commission to review the multimodal transportation plan draft for adoption before the end of the year and also consideration of our annual financial comprehensive report. September 19th, we will be discussing, as you recall, we put out to our community members nominations for theater renaming. We are currently vetting those and will bring forward a recommendation or a few recommendations for council's consideration on September 19th. And with your approval of the annexation petition, you just set public hearings for September 19th as well on that development. And then finally, September 26th, so please note the change in date. Our typical meeting would be the 25th, but that is Yom Kippur, so in observance of that, the workshop is the 26th. We will be doing something new related to budget. And I'm going to take you all out on site to see some of our capital projects that are both underway and will be proposed in the 2024 or future years. We found that this is a really valuable tool and other organizations to kind of get a better sense of why some of these projects cost so much, but also physically see some of the, you know, deficiencies that we're trying to address as well. So we're excited to try this out and get feedback from council. And that takes us basically through most of September. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you, that's really exciting, the September workshop, sounds fun.
Field trip.
Field trip, yeah.
Get your permission slip.
Okay, we are on to council comments, we'll begin with Councilor Sampson.
So I had, we got a request to provide tickets to the Arts Hub fundraiser, which is September 9th. And I wanted to bring that up with council. Last year, we had six tickets that we used. I don't know if the rest of council has looked at their schedules to know if they can attend, but I would make a recommendation that we, we do purchase tickets for council members that can attend that fundraiser.
Yeah, we can, any suggestion on how many or can we get a table or is it individual seats?
I think you buy, the way that the email wrote, you buy individual tickets, because last year it was a walk around event, there wasn't actually a table. So I'm assuming it's the same sort of thing this year.
I feel like last year we did like buy a table in a way, like we, we said seven tickets or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, there's seven of us. Yeah, I don't, because the way they have it organized, they don't really have a table.
I know.
I think you're thinking of another table.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Like we did the Dr. Cox thing.
I just remember I'd already bought my ticket before we.
So let's do this, Councilor Sampson. Let's, let's, you know, use our discretionary funds to order up to seven tickets, depending on if we can make it. We could communicate through our city clerk here who's available to make it, who can't. And then through that process, we can purchase some tickets to the Arts Hub fundraiser.
It's the 9th.
To support the arts.
Yes.
9th of September.
Seven to 9:30. Oh, I don't know, I was agreeing with Councilor Walton.
Oh, I'll adjourn. Was that, Councilor Sampson?
I'm sorry, say that again?
What's the date of the event?
The date is Saturday, September 9th.
Okay. I will check my calendar.
All right, so if you can make it, you know, we'll reach out to our city clerk and we'll make that purchase. Thanks. All right, anything else, Councilor Sampson?
Yeah, you all have received draft number two of the City Administrator Recruitment brochure. And I sent that to your email this evening. It has, this draft two has edits that were consolidated and sent yesterday to our executive search firm. So if you all would look at that and if there's any edits, other edits you need to make, if you could let me know about those edits by tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. Because if you recall, they're going to try to get this out on Friday.
I reviewed, it looks good to me.
Well, let's just, if we, when you win the rest, let's get a chance. Send those comments over to Councilor Sampson ASAP.
Winning, hashtag winning.
Thank you, by the way, Councilor Sampson, for priding us along with getting the revisions done. That's great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure, and then the other thing is the schedule. Lynette has given everybody a hard copy of the schedule. If there's any concerns, again, you can email those over to me and Lynette, I would do both of us. And we can get those over. But generally, it looks like it's about the same thing as what we saw the last week.
I have mine.
Okay.
Could I point out a few things on it? Call your attention to some things. The, the highlighted, oh wait, you have different highlights. Yeah, the highlighted items are definitely meetings and touchpoints with, with us. So those are kind of mission critical dates. But I wanted to call your attention to the second one, that the line above it, on October 6th, you'll be receiving materials that then between the 6th and the 13th, you would have to be reviewing. So you want to make sure and block time, especially because that was a chunk of time where like five of our, six of us have outages planned. And then the second one is the, on October 31st, you'll be receiving briefing materials. And so you would need, there will probably be more episodes speak between October 31st and November 8th. And so I'm, I'm thinking that at some point, I don't know how these, how this information and kind of our timeline gets posted to the public, but what we have right now, so the public knows, is a draft timeline that we put together to, A, make sure we could, we could sort of see how the dates were hanging on the calendar, to see if we could complete this task by the end of the year and maybe what that meant with known outages for council members. And number two, wanted to sort of have an idea for those running for council and for the public when the interviews would be, would be happening. So we're looking at that, the finalists being announced in, in an interview process that would likely involve candidates coming to Lafayette and public, some public engagement opportunities in early October. So a couple of things, a couple of questions, I guess, for, for Lynette, so that she can work with the consultant to finalize it, is the two dates that are suggested to be on Fridays, those first two highlighted dates, Lynette says it works a little better for staff and if those are moved to Thursday, the day before.
Didn't we already change this?
Yeah, we talked about that a little, the consultant recommended that if we couldn't do Friday, they could move to Thursday. But that doesn't work for other counselors. Oh, it didn't? Right, so that, do you have the new copy that Mary Lynn gave to you? The one with the red pen on, yeah, that one. Yep, so for the, what's proposed for the 22nd of September, that date then would move to the Monday, but since that's Yom Kippur, we would move that to Tuesday. So you would have kind of two events that night, you would have your CIP tour and you would have the meeting proposed here. Makes sense? The 13th would stay and then.
We're getting a copy of this, right?
Yeah.
We're going to solve copy. Okay.
We just, a lot of the dates were still, not a lot, but some of them were still in place. And then November 8th, we just have to do a little maneuvering with some other meetings, but we can make that November 8th. And we, but we definitely, yeah, okay, cool, thanks. I didn't realize all this updated info, good. So, okay, so then, based on this then, does anybody have any, I mean, can we communicate back to the executive search firm, a green light on the schedule?
Yeah, if we haven't already, councilor, or I think our city clerk can do that.
Yep.
The only thing I would say is that interview start date is tight, because I just read there was a planning commission meeting that evening. I would be more inclined to push that a day or two, so that we don't, we don't have to ask planning commissioners or reschedule.
Yeah, we could kind of see when the public, when, what, maybe that first day is a, maybe that doesn't impact.
Yeah, I'm just, I think we'll probably open it up. I mean, it's odd because it just has one date, but we also have to look at when the candidate can come in to interview. So my guess is we may be looking at that full month of November, minus any holidays, and, and see what works for them as well.
Yeah. And am I correct in assuming most of this is going to be in the evenings?
I'm guessing yes.
Yeah, it's got to be. Okay, are we good on the timeline?
So we would just need to make sure we're prepared, if, if everything is going smoothly, that you're marking kind of on your calendar whenever we need to post a special meeting ahead of time.
Councilor Sampson, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Councilor Walton, do you want to share the rest of your comments?
Sure, I wanted to see if we could take action and suggest that we move our meeting, which is typically done on Tues, that first Tuesday of November, to Monday. Since Tuesday, November 7th is election day.
Do we need to formally do that or is it already scheduled?
It's not been scheduled.
Okay.
And so, yes, I think we still do. And I don't think there, were there any other dates in September that we need to address? I think the one for Yom Kippur we have now.
You mean November or September?
November, no, election day.
So, so let's, we'll, sorry, one thing at a time. So let's do, so you, you're suggesting we, November, Tuesday, November 7th is election day. Let's have our city council meeting on Monday, the 6th.
Yes.
I have an invitation for it.
Yes, but it hasn't been, we haven't made it official.
Okay, so let's make it official.
I move to move our November 7th City Council Business Meeting to November 6th, 2023.
We have a motion, three seconds.
Second.
Just do a quick roll call vote, please.
Councilor Walton?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Walsh?
Yes.
Councilor Barnes?
Yes.
Councilor Briggs?
Yes.
Mayor Monget?
Yes.
And Councilor Sampson?
Yeah.
That motion passes unanimously. Does any, are there any other dates? Okay, HRC, we've addressed all any other dates throughout the, it's already addressed on the calendar. Okay. And.
What about September 26th? What's that one where we move to Tuesday, September 26th?
Yep, yeah, we already did that.
Okay.
Let's just work it up.
Excuse me. I wanted to let members of the public and counselors know that there is a Senior Resource Fair on September 22nd at the seniors, Lafayette Senior Center. There's an opportunity to register if you want to go to check out the Rec Center Special Events Guide, but I'm sure you can just drop in. But I think there's a preregistration opportunity, there might be lunch, a lunch included, so maybe that preregistration helps them make sure they have enough food. So Senior Resource Fair at the Lafayette Senior Center, it's been growing. And so they're hoping that maybe next year it'll be big enough and have it at the rec center. So lots of different services and tables. So that's going to be on Friday, September 22nd, from 9:00 AM to noon. And it is free and open to, to everybody. So, you know, you don't have to be a senior. And it is free and open to, to everybody. So, you know, you don't have to be a senior. Consider yourself a senior to 10. Maybe you have family members who are seniors, or loved ones who are making decisions about...
Or wrong.
See you there? All right. And also, September 30th is Boulder County Senior Law Day. And there is an event in, this is going to be in Longmont, at the Longmont Senior Center from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, September 30th. And so this used to be kind of law day that they did all down at the Capitol for all of Colorado, but I guess a few years ago, they split it off and, and they do them regionally. And so this one is kind of the Boulder County version. And so that'll be at the Longmont Senior Center, September 30th. So I think there'll be some information about what's happening legislatively, and, and probably some, some similar types of resources. So great opportunities. And, and just a reminder, you know, for seniors interested, Meals on Wheels is, Coal Creek Meals on Wheels serves our community. And just had a conversation with a family member about Meals on Wheels and their community, and they're like, I didn't even know that was a thing, you know, and it was just like, so, like this lightbulb moment. So just a friendly reminder that those kind of resources exist, because not only does it provide nutrition, it also provides kind of that welfare check, and also some, some socialization. And finally, teachers, get ready. School starts.
Tomorrow. They're back.
Teachers report.
Watch your school zones.
Um, yeah, so be, be aware of kids waiting for buses and bus stops. Pay attention to when that little stop sign's out. All the traffic stops in both directions. Be looking out for kids crossing streets to go to school. Young kids might push that button, but they don't know the driving rules. They, they may, you know, make sure you're paying close attention. We have a lot of busy streets that are during peak times that are going past our schools here in Lafayette. So just encourage everybody to take special care and look out for the students. And, yeah, good luck, everybody.
Thank you.
With the school year. Good luck, teachers.
Much appreciated. Thank you. All right, Mayor Proton?
Um, just a couple of things. So Consortium of Cities met a couple of weeks ago. And real quick update, so we talked about affordable housing. We all know how Lafayette's doing, which is really good compared to the rest of the county, so. But the Lions had some interesting affordable housing that they put into place with a private-public partnership. And there's actually a tour that I think County Commissioner Lockupin is sponsoring. And sometime in September, I'll give the date for people if you're interested in going up and taking a look at it. It's some really interesting stuff.
You should do a golf court tour with the mayor of the Lions. He'll take you around, and it's fun, and then you get to go.
Obviously, you've already done it.
Yeah, and you get to see like the affordable housing that's out there, because it's really nice, too. It's...
Yes, different take on it. So there's that. The other thing is, there are two tracks that have developed right now for the wage review for minimum wage. The cities that were brought forward by Boulder last time is still looking for 2025 beginning target date, but the county commissioners are looking at unincorporated Boulder County to move forward in 2024. So kind of a little bit more accelerated, because they don't have as many of the same community checklist to do. So there's that. I think that's, that's everything. Oh, and then the mayors and commissioners Consortium for US 36 had a great meeting, talked about lobbying efforts, and how it's been down at the state capitol. They're talking about Senate Bill 213. Was it 213?
Yep.
213, and how it's gonna be coming back in pieces. And then they had State Senator Faith Winter, who represents like Westminster, Federal Heights area, came to speak, because I guess she's been designated as one of the point people when it comes to looking at when they take it apart, because they're not gonna leave it in such a big bill, but taking it in smaller chunks. So she came and spoke a little bit about that. And so that's coming down the pipe, but all communities are kind of interested in what 213's gonna look like, coming down the pipe. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Briggs?
Yeah, if anybody's interested in 213, they're probably, you could do a review of it at Dr. Cog tomorrow night, if anybody wants to. Trying to remember, I don't know if you can call in or not.
Yeah, just, yeah, let us know how we can be a part of it. Counselor Briggs?
Yeah, so I emailed everyone this map. I, so it's part of the Rocky Mountain Airport Roundtable for Community Noise Abatement. It's a nice long, RMMACNR. We've been, lots, lots of challenges over the past year and a half. And, but we acquired funding and hired a consultant with, you know, very strong aviation background, knowledge of, you know, FAA requirements, regulations, and whatnot. And a lot of the primary duty, the potential duties for hiring this consultant was to look at noise abatement studies, create a VFR procedure for noise abatement, possibly looking at a 150 study, using landing fees as a way to reduce noise impact. I mean, there's a whole long list, a bunch of things. Just trying to look at any way possible to help mitigate the noise. The first step was, they came up with a few recommended routes to the northern, uh, flight, what's it called? Training area, the northern training area. So a lot of the, the flights that are coming out of Rocky Mountain right now are from training schools. And there's a training area to the north and one to the south. And so they started with the ones headed to the north. I particularly really love the one on the very far right, because it basically avoids everything, which is ideal. Some of the challenges they have, especially for folks learning to fly, is having good landmarkings. Yep, the blue. And so they tend to rely on major streets like 287, 95th, et cetera. They, these are not implemented. They just, we took a look at them, and now they're talking with if the other pilots and training schools to see their thoughts and possibilities in being able to incorporate some of the, the flight patterns to mitigate some of the noise. Next steps would be looking at paths to the south, and hopefully then looking at landing fees. And I, I think the one promising thing about the consultant, one is getting this great information, but we're, it's opening a communication with the, the pilots and the training schools, where I think there was just a lot of blockage. Like, we weren't really able to communicate with them and, and in a collaborative effort. And by having this middle man who is, has no skin in the game, right? Like, there's, he's not, they're not mad or anything. They're just trying to help us find solutions and work together. So it's definitely promising and exciting to be getting somewhere, because it's been a lot of, a lot of it's just sitting there trying to learn all the aviation birdies. And what does that mean? And why can't we do this? And why can't we do that? And so it's been nice to get over that hurdle and actually get some things started. So that's the beginning updates of where we're headed and where we're going. And I would say, I would encourage everyone, if they're experiencing noise, to please go on the website, Rocky Mountain Metro Airport. And there's a, there's a form on there. I can share it with some, but there's a form on there to notify that you're experiencing noise, or, you know, if you feel like the plane is under the 500-foot easement that it's supposed to be in, or whatnot. The problem is that folks, yeah.
500 feet? You need to be up higher.
Yeah. Well, with these little... I agree, but they have their rules. It's important to notify and fill out these forms, because right now, folks aren't seeing that there's a purpose to it. But then it's the airport going, well, the complaints have gone down, so we're doing something right. And so if you do hear anybody and they're experiencing the issue, please file the form. And we are working on an app that will be significantly easier to use and find and do. But the counselor, Maxine Most, is leading that thing in Lewisville. So hopefully, but it'll, it is imperative, if you're experiencing it, to please, you know, let them know one way or another. You can send an email, but the form is definitely easier online. Because otherwise, they're gonna go, well, there's no one complaining, so we must be fine.
Yeah, it's probably people just being sick and tired of complaining and hearing nothing back, and then giving up.
It's, I agree. It's frustrating, and they, they are not responding in the best ways to some of the complaints, or at all sometimes. And that's why we're working on the app. But if complaints go down, then I don't, we don't have anything to point to.
Yeah, you need evidence.
Thanks for taking the time to do that.
Yeah. Then, let's see. I did, and maybe later you can just, well, I, Preston Patton and the crosswalk at Wanaka Lake. Wasn't there another, there was somebody else that was saying that we needed a crosswalk over there. Is it like the same corner? We can circle up later, but I just, you know.
It seems like that we should just make sure it's on our transportation plan.
All right. And then the, let me make sure. Okay. And the last thing I wanted to bring up is the plaque at the cemetery. I would, you know, I forwarded verbiage to y'all a while ago, that HRC sent, and I, we've had a lot of public comment today about it, including, you know, folks in our history.
Museum.
Museum. I would just like to see, can I just give a thumbs up for some plaques? Or a plaque?
I would be interested in directing staff to, to take a look at the, of what a, I guess what a plan would be to acknowledge and honor that. And I think a plaque seems like a good thing, that if there's... And, and there's some momentum there, obviously, already. But I don't know that we've ever, as a council, taken any formal action on directing staff to do anything. So, you know, there seemed to be some interest, in particular to, you know, a certain director of the staff. But I, you know, I think we just let our interim city administrator figure out how to get that done, and what that would look like, come back to us. But I don't recall that we, I don't, I might be wrong, but I don't think we've taken any formal action to give staff any direction on it. But we certainly have heard a lot about it, and it seems like the appropriate step, and it would be in line with the kinds of things that we've done to honor it. I was really interested in Chelsea's comments. Was it Chelsea?
Yeah.
You know, that was, that was, that was new to me, I guess, that, that concept. But I've appreciated the, the interest that the community has had, and I appreciated Doug coming tonight, because hearing from him, I know he's been really, really involved in it, and, you know, he's been in touch with the Samano family. So it seems like taking some formal action from the city perspective, at the direction of the councils, right, right next step.
So we're asking to have staff follow up with some of the folks that are organizing this effort to see what language we could provide for a plaque, you know, in the appropriate area? Sort of like what we did with the Rose Luris Pool?
Very similar, yes. Looking at something very similar to the way the Rose Luris plaque went.
I mean, I think with all of these things that we do, there's a certain amount of historical accuracy that we need to attempt to do. And so I'm assuming there would be some formality to that process, that I would want to make sure the right staff people are involved in, in that consideration.
No, I agree. And I think, but following, you know, the car, I mean, he said it was a collaborative effort last time, and, and it was. And I think that's, I, I think there's been some, and I don't, I hear things from lots of different areas, and maybe some things incorrect, but a lot of these folks are hearing that it has to come from council, like staff is telling them it has to come from council. And maybe that's incorrect, I don't know, but it just, they're getting this message of, we need to direct. And so I'm trying to fix that problem, right? You know? Is there anybody that is against a plaque?
Well, what I would like to do is have a part of a larger conversation about the benches, because we talked about putting forward, moving forward benches as well, and we haven't really taken action on that. You know, I, I think that these things that come up, I just like to tie everything together, so we have a plan. Because I feel like we're band-aiding and we're patchworking things when we don't have a larger strategy. So I would like to see us, and maybe it is asking staff to put together a larger plan on, on some of these pieces. Because we talked about advancing, you know, the, the conversation benches as well. So, you know, and that got a nod at one of our council meetings as well. So, you know, let's, I would like to put it all together, because I think it is all together. It's how do we, as a community, heal? How do we recognize, and how do we move forward? And that's what I would like to do.
Let's, let's do this. I think every, everyone that's spoken is correct. I think we can, for this instance, we move forward with supporting the community, with getting some sort of plaque acknowledgement up for the cemetery. And in addition to that, Mayor Proton Wong is 100% correct. It's not sustainable for us to just, as soon as one issue comes up, coming up, and dedicating all this staff time and resources, doing one thing, and then another thing, and another thing, and another thing. And it has to be part of a bigger picture. What are we doing to address our history? What are we doing to acknowledge? What are we doing to identify what's, what really happened, what didn't? And what are we doing to acknowledge inequities across the board? You're 100% correct in that. And I think we can do both in this case.
The benches idea, I think, is really, you know, that when that idea and that concept was presented, it really was wrapped around kind of that, the healing and a sense of belonging and space for that. And, and I'm wondering if there's, kind of where that fits in. Is it just a place with, that's sort of known that this is a healing bench, and this is what it is? Or are you, do you envision something that's a little bit more of a community conversation and some programmatic things, maybe centered around the introduction of them, or where they go, or...
Right.
This benches for the street. I mean, it kind of feels like there's more to the conversation.
Yeah, and I would love to have that conversation. I think that, that's what I would like us to kind of discuss and maybe figure out. Is there, is there programmatic components of it? Is it just simply, we acknowledge, you know?
Yeah, and this could be a part of...
So I think it's a larger conversation.
And Counselor Sampson just mentioned the renaming of the Miller Theater as well. Kind of like, just, I think the, the point she's making is that there's like all these things happening, and it's determining what order to go in, and, and how they all kind of tie in together.
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely being respectful of staff time, what kind of priorities we might have for the, you know, between here and the end of the year, and then... And then the councillors, so.
Okay.
I like, I think I, what I'm hearing this recap is, is still having them be separate.
Well, I think is for this particular item, the plaque that Council Briggs is bringing up, let's, let's take care of that. Let's have staff work with the community, get that done. As that's happening, is, is, we have to look at the big picture. Let's also figure out how we're, because it's going to happen again. Because it's going to happen, like every, every meeting, someone new is going to come up and someone new is going to bring something up. What are you going to do to address this? What are you going to do to address that? And we're going to get yelled at and people are going to say, you're not giving enough time in this, you're not giving enough time for that. Every single resident in this city is going to pull us in a different direction. And so we need to be organized on how we, how we approach, you know, those different opinions, particularly when it comes to, to DEI or, or addressing our history, which I feel like we just don't have a lot of already resources in place for. So I think that needs to be addressed as soon as possible. And I've been working a lot with, with some community members in the historical society and figuring out how to, how to connect all these things together. So I don't know, maybe it happens with that. We also, at some point, need to readdress the, the name of the Mary Miller Theater. Like, there's just so much to do on this. So that's kind of what I'm saying. Let's take care of this and then.
What's kind of the next step do you see? A conversation at the council level or?
Are you asking me or are you asking? Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure if you were really communicating.
Is there a, is there a specific priority that you feel it's attached to? Or is it, it's, it's a standalone thing? I'm just kind of wondering, like, what's the next thing?
Right, and I think it's.
Find out a little bit, like, and maybe it's a, we just need some space at a council workshop for having.
And maybe that's, that's where it begins, is to, is time at a council workshop to begin chatting about and figuring out, so what are the next steps and how are we going to address all of the future things? Because there is, I feel like we have a drip, drip, drip. And it's just like, okay, so every time it comes up, we're like, oh, what do we do? And, you know, I'd rather us have in place, like, this is what we've done. This is how we've been proactive versus reactive. And I think, you know, we know that being in the American West, there's complications, right? With our town history, just as there is with the state and so forth and so on. Every community has it. But it's how then do we then take these items as they come up to then move them through a channel or point to what we've done that then addresses, you know, how, how we handle it? I, I guess, I just feel like we're reinventing the wheel every time. And it's like, oh, yep, we'll just do another plaque. Well, okay, but at some point, we're going to have plaques all over the place. And, you know, because it's just, but how, what are we doing as a community to have those conversations? You know, that's where.
And maybe it's an open question of like, you know, is there a one-size-fits-all kind of thing? Or maybe there, maybe it's, you know, case by case. Well, let's, let's, maybe the action tonight is to direct staff to schedule 20 minutes at an upcoming workshop for us to discuss this. We can get a briefing on, you know, what kinds of activities you're talking about and thinking about and the discussions that you're having. We can kind of recap and remind each other what we've done, what other kinds of things fall in this category to maybe start to put the, you know, some sandbox, instruct a sandbox to then further the conversation.
Yeah, that works. Just allocating time for the discussion with all, all seven of us, yeah. So let's, yeah, we can go ahead and do that. I mean, it doesn't need to be, you know, right away, but, you know, when, when, when the time is there.
Works through the.
With it, with our calendar, yeah. Okay.
Clear we?
Clears.
Clear as much?
This glass of water? This glass of water?
Okay.
So we're giving thumbs up for them to look at the plaque and to find through the scheduling calendar sometime to discuss the bench and, and that larger subject.
Yes. I think that's, that's fine and I just, I, but I don't want to continue what we've been doing, these one-off things. But yes, let's, let's do it.
Thank you. Oh, the, that was one more thing with the Rocky Mountain Airport. Please direct them to come to our meetings and give public comment. I mean, if someone's coming and they're having issues and like, come to the meeting, watch the meeting, come or.
Like our meeting or their meeting?
The, our roundtable, the Rocky Mountain Airport Community Roundtable for Noise.
Could you send out one of these?
Yeah.
And I'll be glad to share with the other.
It's the first Thursday of every month. But yes, I will send, so then you guys have, and I'll send the link on where they can report things and all the things. So then you can just share that to anyone.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, Councilor Barnes.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm glad to hear that we finally got some movement on the plaque. I think it's a little embarrassing that we, I know it's one-off, but we got a hot mess here that I think we need to address things when they come up. So I appreciate our movement forward on that. And I, I look forward to having a plan like Council Wong said, like, we, we know we have something that we need to work on and having a plan, like our multimodal transportation plan. I've been waiting for that for a long time, so I'd like to see, you know, a DEI plan in place as well. I just had a couple of items to report out on and I don't remember the date, but the Sustainability Resilience Advisory Committee is meeting with Planning Commission and LoSAC on the community, sorry, climate action plan for our city. And it is 60 different goals. And it is based on four different areas of those goals, meeting with what's necessary. And that's greenhouse gases, but that's only 20% of it. 30% is based on resilience. 25 is equity and 25% is feasibility. So the biggest push is on making this a more resilient community. And one of the things what we talked about with the CTC plan, that's, that's inherently part of resilience. Aging in place is inherently part of that, ADUs. Greenhouse gases is great, but there's a lot of things that I think we can work on. And so that's going to happen. And there, there are draft goals in place, we'll get public comment on them, and then they will come to council so we can see what those goals are for resilience. And so that's happening. I just wanted to let you know that I spoke on behalf of us today. I hope I did a good job at the air quality. Air Quality Control Commission, AQCC, on the advanced car two rulemaking, which is about electric vehicles or zero emission vehicles, because it could be all kinds of whatever, maybe a nuclear car. But requiring an increased percentage of these zero emission vehicles for sale. So making it possible to get these things and strengthening the emission standards for new gas vehicles. So did a brief comment on that. And also signed on to a petition. For Tri-County Power. And that is to convince them to take advantage of federal, oh, here it is. The, this was a letter from CC4CA, encouraged signing on to this letter with local officials. And this is directly to tri-state power. And it's encouraging them to take funds available through the new era of federal funding to support affordable, reliable and clean energy. So it's talking directly to the energy providers and saying like, we want you to do this, to move towards clean energy. And that's, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Councilor Barnes. We do have an executive session tonight and nothing for me tonight. Want to get to this exciting meeting. So I will move to adjourn to executive session pursuant to Section 24-6-4024A for the Colorado revised statutes for the purposes of discussing a potential acquisition of real property for open space west of 95th Street, 95th Street. Do you have a second?
Second.
There we have motion and second. We have to do, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Who do you want the second to vote to?
Mayor Portem is fine.
Mayor Portem Wong.
Yes.
Councilor Barnes.
Yes.
Council Briggs.
Yes.
Mayor Monget.
Yes.
Councilor Sampson.
Yes.
And Council Walton.
Yes.
Thank you. The city council will adjourn to executive session and will not return to an open meeting. The time is now 10:54 PM. Thank you.